Competing against the high school district's board meeting and the chief of police town hall with the mayor. So don't know how many people have in attendance tonight, but um welcome everybody. And Eliana, can we have a roll call, please?
Jessie McBride.
Here.
Jessie Marcus.
Here.
Jessie Diasolka. Jessie Diasolka.
Here.
Vice President McAvoy.
I'm here. You're just trying to find the button.
I'm here. Thank you. So again, welcome, everybody. I've posted some links in the chat. If you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc link that I've sent over the chat. And I'll send it again for those who are just joining. Please be sure to include your names so that we know who to unmute when the time comes. If the item you would like to speak on is not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. If you're speaking on an item that's on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. And public cons are limited to three minutes per person per topic. Reminder that because we are meeting via teleconference, all votes will be by roll call. So apologies to my board colleagues. I'm going to spring the song. You kind of last minute. It's something I've been mulling over in light of everything that's going on in the nation right now. And also given that I don't have any students to lead us in the pledge, I'm wondering how if anybody would be opposed to foregoing the pledge from here until the end of our school year meetings through July. Is anybody opposed to have a hard time? Can I get a thumbs up, a thumbs down? I got a thumbs up from Cecilia. Maria, yes. Dennis, Alisa. Okay, so it looks like everybody's okay with that. So we're going to go on. And we will remove the pledge from here through our July meetings. Are there changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to propose some. The first is, and in the first couple, there's a way to do it if you're not comfortable. But I think we could move nine, one and nine, two to consent because those are very small dollar amounts for the bond. And I think we could move nine, three and nine, four, but those are larger amounts. So if people are uncomfortable with that, I would just suggest we put it right after item six, since we have a lot of, which will be long discussions and these will be really quick. And then the second thing is, I would like to suggest we pull item seven point four and and move it to next week's meeting on June 17th. And let me explain why. Based on the discussion we had on May 20th regarding capacity at our facilities, we've done an analysis on a room by room capacity at each of our sites that was finished too late for the demographer to use. And it's important for our demographer to incorporate the new data into his work. And then more importantly, by publishing the capacity data before next week's meeting, it'll make the conversations more meaningful since everybody will have the right data. And I feel like the last meeting, we actually confused people because we didn't have the correct capacity numbers. And then in addition, I would ask Dr. Baker to have a staff member share next week how we determine capacity based on special programs and services provided at each school. And and then if you joined us tonight for item seven point six, I'm hoping that if we do agree to this, the item will definitely be back on the agenda next week on the 17th.
For item seven point four, you mean?
Yeah. So I mean, we've all gotten emails where people are making comments like, I don't understand. Why don't you move more kids to this school because they're at 50% capacity? And, and what we're planning to do is on Friday, when we put out the agenda, we're going to actually have the detailed by-site schedules that I prepared and the principals reviewed. And Don Diaz helped spend a lot of time generating with me. And so I think it'd be a more meaningful discussion if we all had the correct data.
So with item, go ahead.
Oh, so I was going to say, I absolutely agree, Dennis, in terms of moving the seven point four to next week. And so everybody has the correct information and we're all commenting and you know, it makes sense in terms of using everybody's time wisely. I think that's great. I also wanted to mention, I'm wondering if we could, I'm actually fine moving the nine point one to three and four, the bond action items to bond consent. And then I was wondering if we could move, that would mean we, could we move eight and nine up to right after five oral communication? That way, they're so busy with everything, they could actually hop off the call. I don't think they need to stay on. Because some of these other items may take a while. And I think the rest of us all have to be here. Particularly if we're doing them on consent anyway.
So I spoke with Will this evening and he said, as long as they all get moved to consent and we approve the agenda, that that means they're free to go.
Okay. All right. I just want to honor their time.
Yeah.
So they're not, yeah. Because I, every day I'm amazed at how much they're getting done. Amazing. So, okay.
So Maria and Cecilia, are you okay with moving nine, one, two, three and four to consent? Yes. Okay. So all of item nine will be moved to bond consent. Let me just make a note of that. And then is everyone okay with pulling seven point four? For next week? Yes. Okay. We'll go ahead and pull seven point four. So we are getting some comment cards for that item. Those will not be called tonight unless you would like to speak under oral communication. But we would encourage you to come back next week with those comments. So any other changes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Dennis?
Second.
And that was Alisa. Ellie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jessie McBride.
Hi.
Jessie Marcus.
Hi.
Jessie Diasolka.
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy.
Hi.
President Lawson.
Hi. Okay, thank you. We are on oral communication. I don't see any cards that are specifically for this item. Most of them are, they're all on specific agenda items. So we'll move on to item six point one, the National Urban Alliance. Thank you, everyone, for being here for this.
Thank you so much. Yeah, awesome. Thank you, members of the board, Dr. Baker. Yeah, these are the members of the National Urban Alliance. I'm very excited to be here with them tonight. And some of them are from New York over there, so it's late for them. So thank you so much for allowing us to go first on the agenda. We appreciate your time also to the members. So thank you. And so our work, oh, actually, I'm going to share my screen. Sorry. Let's see if this works. Oh, I'm not able to share my screen. Kyle, if you could switch those settings, please. So while we're getting ready for that, I just want to let you know, so I'll be introducing the members of the National Urban Alliance as we progress through our presentation tonight. So each of them will help with this presentation.
So I have to change you to the host for right now to do that.
Or would you like to, oh, okay.
Yeah. So you should have the access to do that now.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone see that then? Let's start in here. Good. All right. Thank you, everyone. So I don't know if the public, but my name is Lynda Montes. I'm Assistant Superintendent, Redwood City School District, over at Educational Services, preschool through fifth grade, and I also support the Department of English Learner Services. So thank you. So this evening I was asked to present about our work with the National Urban Alliance. And so we, let me make sure this is the right direction. Sorry, I realized that it started with the first one. So about a year and a half ago, our district entered into a collaboration with the National Urban Alliance. And the collaboration supported our work in a bigger aspiration and goal that we had as a district to ensure that all of our students were receiving high-quality educational experiences. And this is across our district. And so the work began with Dr. Yvette Jackson, who will speak first in just a little bit. But one of the first activities that she led us through was our visualization of who is a Redwood City School graduate. And when they leave, describe who would be our R C S D graduate. We looked at, so the principals came together with cabinet members and district leadership to talk about the goals and aspirations for our students. And through one of our activities, we learned that across the school site, regardless of what school site we were representing, we had very similar ideas and goals and aspirations for our students. This was really important for our work because it set the stage that we all want our students to be inspired, to be creative, to be collaborative, to articulate, to be tech savvy. So we met with, over a series of maybe six to eight meetings that first year, including Saturdays. And during those Saturdays, we just spent an entire day talking about how we can best serve the needs of our students. And I wanted to thank Dr. Baker for allowing this whole thing to happen. Because it is through his leadership that we're allowed to do this and also to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. So one of the first elements from the National Urban Alliance is that the researcher behind our work, Dr. Jackson, so Yvette is going to talk about the pedagogy of confidence and what that, what that means.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for the invitation, especially as Janet said, at this time, that is just surreal to be able to be in a place with you here, even though it's virtual. But to have things that are happening in your district that are so inspirational and so hopeful, it just keeps us moving ahead. And I thank you for the opportunity for being part of it. So I want to start with this idea of fearless expectation. You know, many years ago, I was a teacher and I taught for the, with the same students for three years. And what I found over those three years is that I had students who had unbelievable strengths and gifts. And yet they were still labeled as underachieving students because they were in a school that had been labeled as that. Now, why do I share that? Because what wound up happening is I started saying, what is it that really differentiates programs that are labeled for students who are labeled gifted that should really be for everybody? So I started doing research and one of the most important things I found is that the biggest difference, the biggest focus in the world of gifted education, as opposed to every other focus in education, is belief. Belief. You see, when you believe that students have the ability for high intellectual performances, you give them the invitations to push to the frontier of their intelligence. You give them the opportunity to meet high expectations. You give them higher levels of thinking through rigorous programming. And that is what, in fact, all students should have. And in fact, is exactly what equity-conscious education is. So I share that with you because the idea then became, well, where is the other research, though? And what we have learned from both cognitive and neuroscience research is students are given the kinds of practices that we give in gifted education. You can not only mitigate for underachieving, underachievement, what you can actually do is get students to express high intellectual performance. And one of my teachers, and actually my major teacher, was a man named Reuven Feuerstein. And he was the one who really underscored for me the idea of belief. Because you see, Reuven worked with students who had Down syndrome. And he found out that when you give students the kind of high-level activities that can really push them and frame it in the context of their own learning style, you can actually not only change their thinking, but move them away from the underperforming kind of status that they had. And so in a pedagogy of confidence, we actually use the word fearless expectation. Because for too many years, we had been told to focus on where students were weak, and I put that in quotes, instead of starting with their strengths. And the neuroscience has proven, when you start with strengths and actually what students have been exposed to, you can, in fact, as I had just said, get students to the idea of high intellectual performances. And that's what's happening right here in Redwood City. Luckily, I have been able to work with the National Urban Alliance. And I share that with you because in the National Urban Alliance, for years, we have worked with this kind of pedagogy that goes and takes teachers, teaches them the science of learning, and then the kind of practices that they can institute, that they can establish in their classrooms that are going in what we call gift all students. And that's where we are today in Redwood City. We have these high operational practices that have been actually generated from the research that I was telling you about in gifted education, the neuroscience, the cognitive research that Stephanie Rome is going to talk to us about. And we will look at how that application has really pushed the inspiration, the motivation and engagement of all students along. So I'm not going to take up any more time because I really want to push through and have Steph and Bob talk. But I do thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Yvette. So we had a number of sessions with Yvette and I felt like I was getting smarter every single time. So we were all learning so much. So thank you so much for sharing. Our next, so in between Yvette's times with us, we also had the pleasure of working with Maria Sedeth, who's also a N U A scholar. She continued to work with us and support the principals and staff development team in between the times that we were working with Yvette. And one of, on our collaborative, we looked at the essential question that is, how does belief in the learner manifest itself in our district policy and practices? And I would also add in our site policies and practices. And so this became the center of the work that Yvette was doing with us and is also with Maria. So Maria, would you like to share a little bit about what you did with staff development and our principals at our school sites?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to, to share with you our work in our collaborative. And a couple of things I'd like to highlight is how we frame this work. It is a collaborative. It is, my role as regional director is to come in and first learn everything I can about your schools, your teachers, your classrooms, your administrators, your districts. So when I came in, actually, it was last fall, a year ago last fall, my whole role was get into your school. So your administrators welcomed me into your schools. They took me around. I met different teachers. I met the office staff, everyone involved in your schools and got a whole sense of all the strengths because we always are working from an asset-based perspective of what is the Redwood City School District? Who is the Redwood City School District? So that's my role. And so from there, we started working on our collaborative, setting goals and what this work can look like. So every district we go into, it's very much focused and centered on that district. And we work as a collaborative. We share together. We decide on goals together. And so with our work with, with Redwood City, it was very much framed around, how can we build on the strengths of Redwood City to really engage with this idea of high intellectual performances for all students? And we frame that around the belief that all students are gifted, as are their teachers who teach them and the administrators who support and lead them. So if we really look at it as a tri-fold focus. So with our work with you, we had three different strands working across our, our year and a half now together. The one district, district leadership was, we really focused in again on who is our R C S D graduate through the lens of how can each administrator, how can each school tell the story of their school, of their district, of their children in terms of then how can they transform, have that transformative equity in, in order to close those opportunity gaps and in order to lift all, all boats up, right? Lift all children up. And so that work has been very engaging. And so between visits, I would go in and we would talk and we would work and, and, and see some more of the work and just keep that communication going and that, that both ways collaboration going. And then with the classroom teachers, our work was very much focused in the beginning on foundational understandings around pedagogy of confidence with a very much specific focus on culturally responsive pedagogy within the context of our own practice, within the context of our own frame of reference. So we all, as educators, come in with our own lived experiences. So how do we build on those strengths so that we lift all the children up? And then with pedagogy coaches, staff development, they are key in this work, by the way. Your staff development, as well as your teachers and your administrators, are just so strong. So with your staff's development, I had the pleasure of meeting with them every month. We set up a book club, literally a book club around pedagogy of competence. And we used N U A strategies. And through, through that work, we delved into the book through the beliefs, practices and structures together. And we used N U A strategies and we started envisioning, how will the coaches be the conduit, really, through all of your schools to carry this work forward? And so I just want to close with what a honor this has been. I mean, I was in your district every month over the last two years. I got to meet so many people. I know so many of you individually and personally. And it's, it's been a gift to my own growth. And it's, it's just, really has been inspirational. I also want to point out that Robert Price, who will be speaking shortly, has created a blog for us that captures Redwood City and N U A collaboration across the last year and a half. So there's all kinds of really important information there. And there's an actual page for the school board, just focused on highlighting all this work. So thank you.
Thanks, Maria. So there's two blog pages. He created one for our district that we use. And then he created a special one for the board members as well. So I think that's the one you were looking at to our board members. So we're going to hear a little bit about and see what this looks like in practice. So Robert, do you want to do an introduction to this one? Have you already watched this little, this short video?
Yes. Thank you, Lynda, and thank you for having us as guests here tonight, school board. It really has been an amazing experience working with Redwood City. Whether it's the students with Amplifying Student Voice, the professional development with teachers, district coaches and leaders. And the coaches are an extraordinary team that carry it forward as well. So on this video that you're going to see, it's a compilation video. And it's going to highlight some of the learnings and instructional practices that we've gained over the last year and a half. The videos themselves are fairly recent and it includes things from Amplifying Student Voice, coaches, teachers. And it's both affirmation as much as a reflective practice. So as you're watching this compilation, and the longer videos are also on the blog, if you wanted to see the longer ones that made this compilation possible. As you're watching it, consider our discussion up to this point and what is our Redwood City School District graduate? And as you're watching it, what is the evidence that we are developing a fearless expectation that all students are capable of high intellectual performance? And that means in the students, as much as the teachers and leaders in the district. So we're going to watch a six-minute video right now. And it is also, as Lynda pointed out, on the blog, should you want to watch it again.
Perfect. Thank you. See if this works. I hope so. You watched it earlier.
N U A is taking any student, no matter where they came from. They come from low income. They've come from trauma. They've come from experiences that have given them a disadvantage in school. You're taking every child and you're giving them the chance to be highly academic. You're giving them the chance to succeed. You're giving them that chance that they can do it.
I thought it was a good idea to do this to show why the school does, like, they focus better when they have positive energy around.
The school I work at, I work at a Title I school where students come from a lot of trauma. They have the odds already against them. Because N U A, I have felt it has just pushed me and motivated me like, wow, these students are amazing. At the top, they can be highly achieving.
I just think that was a really good idea to do this because it benefits the students and the teachers.
I believe in that and that that's safer. They can. And N U A has given me the tools, the strategies, and it has helped me be able to believe so much more in my students to give them that.
I have to school focus because they have someone that actually believes in them.
It's more student-centered than a school-centered. So it's more about their discussion and learning. And I'm more facilitator in the classroom versus I'm not the folder of knowledge. So I think that's a good idea.
From this experience today, I've learned that if you want to do something, if you want to make a movement, you have to work really hard for it.
And I think not just academically, N U A focuses on who they are. They focus on social, emotional learning. It focuses on encompassing community building.
I learned that I should be talking more with other people and be more associative.
It was really awesome to be able to like assist her with my kids in management, but while observing all of the strategies that she's using and how she might teach things differently. So I was, there was so much that I got to see, that she was doing it in class. And even though they're not the same grade levels, it's concepts that I can carry over seamlessly into my classroom. I was really exposed to new ways of thinking that kind of add to my own ways of thinking and the way I ask my students to. So that was really fun.
What is the purpose?
Can I put, what is the definition?
I put, what is the definition of social justice?
If I want to put, it's question I'm writing.
Our social justice.
What does social justice do for humans? What's needed for? Social justice protects us.
What I love is it's not just focused on academics. You're bringing everything in. So my classroom becomes a whole-rounded classroom, teaching them how to be amazing citizens in society.
Today, I really like can share what you want to do.
I'm Angela Ha.
I'm Jessie Reta. I teach eighth grade language arts in this.
I teach fourth grade. I think it was a very positive and very welcoming experience. As a first-year teacher, it was interesting being able to see Mr. Reta teach in a fourth-year classroom as well, even though he's an eighth-year teacher. And I feel like while I was teaching as well, I was kind of reflecting that what I was doing, how the students are engaged and what I think is different with this time.
N U A's actually rejuvenized my love and passion for teaching. I am so excited now that N U A is allowing me to work with teachers to impact all of our students in a way that will directly relate to people and understand them. The more inspired I became and the more robust my notebook became, table of contents. I actually have two different table of contents because one was with Yvette and what she does with us, which is different than the strategies and modeling from Dale. So from there, I created the strategy section of the notebook where I'd go back and I color code and I add to constantly. Because with every training, there's a different idea or something that's been explained in a different way that I go back and add.
N U A is about allowing a student to think itself and to allow them to think in their own way. And it's completely accurate. A child cannot be forced to show their thinking in one way only. They need to be able to show it in multiple ways. And if they have the freedom and the flexibility to do that, then they're more inclined to be proactive in their learning.
So if you have a good question, quit it because a lot of, because some of the answers are right on the wall. See that whole room? Yeah. That's also very, that's pretty much, so pretty much on read, the ones that were memorizing.
Because it's something for the little kids to read. And so when they go to class, they remember the daily message outside.
I said it was really interesting. Because we get to learn other people's opinions, like that what their opinion is about, like what they want to be better or different. We get to open our minds and write what we, our opinions are.
So what are your observations? Do you have any observations or questions in regards to the fearless expectations you just saw of students, teachers, coaches in Redwood City? This is just a glimpse. And after these videos were created, we were doing a lot of virtual work, which went extraordinarily well. So any observations or questions you might have?
Uh, well, just observation that, you know, this work is so timely for the moment we're in. And what an opportunity as we come back to school this next year for students and teachers and those, you know, on the school side or in a virtual setting, just the rich conversations and engaging conversations and, and work that can be done. And I just, I just feel like, you know, the more student voice, the more engaging the curriculum is, the, the conversations that they're real to the students and meaningful. They're so much more apt to, again, sort of like you said, you know, believe in yourself, but just want to do the work, right? Want to learn how to communicate well in order to get your message across. And, you know, and we, we need more dialogue in this world. And I just feel like, you know, this is such a platform for all of that. So I'm so, I'm so glad that we've had a couple of years where we had, you know, three of our schools, uh, you know, doing this. And now we've got more of our schools doing it. And pretty soon I think we'll have all of them, right? Or maybe, yeah, Linda, you can, I don't know if you mentioned that already or not. But anyway, just really exciting.
Thank you.
So I can't see everyone on the board. So if you guys want to pipe in, please do.
So this is Dennis. I just, first I want to start and thank professional development, the teachers, the administrators and Linda and also NUA. And it seems like it would be really important to have board training.
Okay. Yes. So I know NUA has worked with board members in the past as part of their work.
Yeah, and I think that we had that, we were hoping to have that in late March, May? I don't even know, but it was on, it was on the agenda. And, and we went shelter in place and everything changed. It was probably March. But I definitely agree with you, Dennis, on that. Would love to have some board training.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to go to the next, sorry, Maria, please.
No, I just really like the fearless expectations part of it, to believe in the children and like they, you know, it's like, if you believe in them, they will amaze you of all the things that they can do. So for me, I'm really happy to see this work. We tried several other programs before that have not been as successful from what I could see. So I'm really hopeful that this one will be the one that really pushes us over and has all our students performing and the teachers doing the work without feeling like they're threatened. And like Dennis, I'd like to thank everyone on staff development, Linda, and of course, Dr. Baker for being the leader that you are and making sure that we get this work done because I feel it's really important.
Thank you. We would agree. I think that, that, and I've had so many different experiences as a teacher. I taught special education for a very long time. I taught bilingual education. And the thing that I found the most constant is if I looked into the eyes of my students and I really believed in them, I felt that I, they could see that I believed in them and they would rise to the occasion. And I think that that's something that's so powerful that we forget as educators, because we can be so overwhelmed and there's so many challenges. But, and I remember that as a student, somebody saw past the color of my skin for who I was. That made all the difference to me. I would go above and beyond for those teachers. And so that's what I hope that this work is doing for our teachers as well. I just want you to know that the work is not just in words, right? It's not just that we say we're going to believe in the students and we do it. The fact is, there's the research behind that supports the work, which is why Maria, when you say, I hope this one makes a difference. It's the research behind it that will make the difference. And it's our application of this that's going to make the difference, as well as the people who are working with us to present the information to us and to teach us. And so we were very fortunate to also have Stephanie Rome, who's also here from NUA. And she'll explain about these high operational practices a bit, because these are the key to making sure that it is successful in our district. So Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to be a part of this collaborative, happy to be here with you this evening to talk a little bit about Dr. Jackson's seven high operational practices. So what you see on your screen represent categories of support that are fundamental for eliciting high levels of engagement and intellectual processing for students, but also for teachers and coaches and administrators as well. They're designed to guide teachers in making effective pedagogical choices and choices of strategies that optimize learning for students. The NUA strategies that we have the pleasure of introducing to teachers and coaches and administrators and students are what we consider meta strategies. And we look at them as meta strategies in the sense that they catalyze and they activate several of the high operational practices at the same time. And they represent effective ways for students to achieve the goals of the educational experience. When we look at the RCSD graduate, the high operational practices help students access those behaviors that will help them become or activate the potential of those RCSD graduates that's already inside of them. The Pedagogy of Confidence serves as a vehicle for equity in that it revolves around gifting every student with opportunities to practice, to explore and to act on the potential that we know that all students have. Students are able to elicit high intellectual performances, but it's important from Dr. Jackson's perspective and then from ours as a collaborative, that it's not just for the sake of being intelligent. So we want them to have high intellectual performances, but it's so that they can then self-direct and they can self-actualize and they can self-transcend. And we saw some of those voices in the video that we watched and I get excited every time I see it. The high operational practices empower students to ask questions like, what do I want to know more about? What am I more interested in? And then we guide them and help them study those things that they find meaningful and relevant. And then also, we want students to ask, in what ways do I want to contribute my gifts and my strengths to the world? So through the high operational practices, we are empowering students to ask those kinds of questions of themselves and then facilitating a learning, as we heard also in the video. So I'm looking forward to continuing the work with the exceptional educators and students in Redwood City. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. So our initial plans, I just wanted to let you know, Janet referred to this earlier too. What we were supposed to do in March and May was to do with our cohort one, which were the three lab schools, Roosevelt, Garfield and Hoover, was to do monthly co-planning, co-teaching sessions, do continued data collection to determine if level of his implementation, do another round of observations with Maria Suddith to look at our, how we were progressing, the levels of implementation to come up with next steps. And we were also going to launch the new schools, the cohort two, Adelante, Selby, Kennedy, MIT, Clifford and Orion in, in June and in August. And then when COVID-19 came along, it changed our plan. But the fact is, after speaking with the National Urban Alliance, the members here, they quickly, you know, developed a plan that would allow us to take advantage of some of the time we would have, you know, now. And we were able to work deeply with Cohort One and launch Cohort Two in, in sessions. And so Stephanie and Robert developed these online, this online professional learning experiences that were pretty incredible. And so I just wanted to read a short paragraph and this is what I sent to Eric right after. I said, after a quick brainstorm of how we continue with the partnership, the NUA team just went all in. It seemed no one missed a beat. You did exactly what we were asking our teachers in our district to do. You found the way to give the absolute best in this new virtual world. NUA not only showed us how it's done, you added the essential piece we needed to feel. It was leading with heart and compassion in this emergency situation. Even after the first session, I heard teachers comment, it's so refreshing to get together, just to see each other in this new way. NUA brought the NUA lens into this virtual world. You taught that effective instruction is embedding technology and lessons that are empowering student voice, creating community, building student confidence, so they can demonstrate high intellectual performance. We work with other partners who weren't able to do that for us. They said they're not going to be able to do RPD until August, September, October. These guys just stepped up and they did it. And so these are the people that NUA are. So I just want you to know, we're working with an exceptional team of people. And I'm very excited about our continual, our work, our collaboration next year as well. Some of the NUA feedback that we heard from the teachers was how we, as teachers, we can help students to build community, even on a virtual platform, that they were able to implement strategies that they were hearing, that they were able to plan and use these in their virtual world with students that they were leading. NUA works with fourth through eighth grades. I'm not sure if I mentioned that earlier, but this was a wordle that Stephanie created for us. But this came directly from the feedback from the teachers. So I want you to know that what was pronounced, what was most, that stood out from their feedback was students at the core, strategies to help build and make a difference in the lives of the students. That's what I got from this. And it was just very empowering days that we had. And I won't read these out loud to you, but these were some additional feedback that we had. So we had different questions and one of them, what do you do, do, what do you intend to do with the information you've heard in these last sessions? And basically it was just to turn around and use these and, and see its importance in their teaching. And even the principals who participated knew that they could include these in their site plan. So that was excellent. So our next steps for next year is to continue our work with Hoover, Roosevelt, Garfield, Adelante, Selby, Clifford, Kennedy, MIT, Orion and their virtual sessions, continuing to deepen their understanding of what is called the pedagogical flow map, which is the process of the planning and, and the teaching of a series of lessons. And then somebody asked about the final year. So we'll hopefully prepare you for the last Roy Cloud, Henry Ford, North Star and TAT the year after next. And if we can begin a launch date with them, that would be wonderful in May and June of next year. But I finally, I just want you to know that without, this is not possible without our, the president, right? And the Eric Cooper, who was the founder of the National Urban Alliance. So I just want to introduce Eric to the group. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to meet with him and just to have him close with a few words. Eric.
First of all, this is not easy work for guys. We had, we had to, because of the brilliance of the district itself, we had to shift gears very rapidly because of the dual problems that we're faced. And that is COVID and racism in America. You all know it, you know it very well. I was, I had the privilege of being born African American and American. And I really say it's a privilege. I just love who I am. But when I grew up, it was not an easy thing because I was, people projected low expectations on me and wanted me to go into special ed. And I love special ed because I became a special ed teacher and I loved every single student. We're all born with 86 to 100 billion neurons. God gave us all these potentials. It's up to us as human beings to embrace each other. And I just want to back up and say, I don't know if you're picking this up, but we have fallen in love with Redwood City. We have worked with more than 44 school districts since we were founded at the College Board. Yes, the College Board, SAT, Vance Placement Programs and Columbia's Teachers College. We were formulated and developed because we felt that there was a need for finding approaches that really took neuroscience and culturally responsive pedagogy and transformed it into the support of teachers. When I've been to some of your schools, I've been blown away by the teachers. You saw Joel, but there's many, many more teachers who are there. John, as a superintendent, I've met many superintendents and have worked with many, and I really care for them all. John has shown more commitment. When we had meetings, he did not disappear. He was there all the time, hands on. The administration of the district is there, the union is there, the support is there. So, so when I say that we've fallen in love, we really have, I want to go back and say, the most important thing that we're trying to project is that it is the relationships that we build with students that is critical. If we don't do that, then the content will not be internalized by the students itself. We have to find ways of engaging them in a way that they see the big picture. So when you saw those students on, on videotapes that Bob took pictures of, I mean, come on. You have some of your students in, 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 in first grade are talking about schema, schema. Now I know schema theory, I've studied it, you know, in terms of how you able to organize theories and ideas and data in a manner that really enables you to succeed. Your students are learning the vocabulary, they all have the capacity. We have to give them the, the opportunity. And what you're doing within, within the district is really critical. And what we are attempting to do is focusing on what we have called the most important skills of the 21st century. And this is broad-based research. It is four Cs, how students are taught to collaborate, communicate, become critical thinkers and become, and become creative. The content sort of merges into that. So in the work that we're doing with you, it is about social justice. It is about providing opportunities for all kids to reach their highest potential and they're all capable of doing it. Yvette mentioned Ruben Feuerstein. Look, Ruben Feuerstein in the halls of Columbia University got me, cornered me against the wall and it said, Attic, only God knows the capacity of a child. And he showed me through what he is, what he was doing with kids who had Down syndrome, where one of his graduates became a clinical psychologist with a reported IQ of 72. So I say, wherever I go, we say, don't doubt the capacity of all children. And we need all children in this time. We need all children to be lifted up and enabled in a manner that helps them make the world, repair the world in a way that we know is necessary. And so we're honored to work with you. We're honored because of the leadership that you guys provide. We are learning as much from you as we hope you're learning from us. So thank you. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your attention and thank you for who you are. Okay, I got one more thing I have to say. One of the best board of educations I got to know was in Seattle, where we worked with all hundred schools for about five years. And they did fairly well with our support. You guys have the same capacity, show the same commitment that we experienced when we were presenting there. Wish we could be there with you, you know, to present with you in person. But given the fact that we're living in this world right now, we're adjusting, we're resilient and we're going to be able to do this together within the partnership that has been created. So thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm going to stop sharing for a second just to see if there's any final questions. I will say that this is essential at work right now. We're hearing a lot about the COVID-19 and the slide that's happening. And what they promote is this perspective that we're looking at all child, all children with their strengths in mind when they're coming to us, with this view of acceleration. So it's not a remediation model, it's acceleration and that's what they promote. And I think this is timely and exactly what we need to be doing. So I'm really proud to be a part of this. And so I thank Dr. Baker for this opportunity and for bringing them forward. But I don't know if there's any last questions because I think we went to first, I apologize.
I don't have a question, but I just want to. My grandparent's here, but now being my uncle.
There's something going on? Okay, I don't have a question. I just want to thank Eric, Yvette, Maria, Stephanie, Robert. You know, I went to Linda when this happened, I go, oh, well, never mind. Oh, I don't, you know, here we are, distance learning. How is this going to work? How is it going to happen? And Maria, Eric, Yvette, thank you, Stephanie and Robert for turning on a dime and making this work for us because it's really important. We need to understand where our students are and take them from that point and move forward and accelerate, just as, just as Linda said. And I know when we had our, our meeting last year, and I think it was Maria and it was Yvette and we were in my office. And they said, for me to really have this work done, I need somebody who really needs to lead it for me. Because, you know, we all wear many hats and this person cannot wear that many hats. So I thank Linda Montes for taking the, what shall I say? Taking the ring, the trophy and moving it forward for us. Because it couldn't be done if we didn't have a person that was responsible for this. There's just too much work to do and now with COVID on top. So I thank you for everything that you've done. I thank Linda for everything that she's done. And even though we are where we are, next year's going to be a great year. It's going to be a fantastic year. And everybody needs to just believe in that. I believe it's going to, it's going to be better than, than ever. I know people are, there's a lot of questions out there. We'll get through some of them tonight, but we're going to make it. We are really going to make it. Thank you again so much.
I have a list.
Yeah, so um I didn't get a chance to say thank you in my earlier comments, and I also wanna say thank you. I think, Eric, you may have given a training that I, I went to when you first came to our district. I'm not sure. I, I think so. Um, anyway, and you've just got so much great energy, and I know I've heard really great things about the rest of you, Yvette. I know uh Linda sings your praises on a regular basis and um the whole team. So I wanna say thank you to NUA. Thanks on believing in us. And I also wanted to say thank you to our teachers, our staff development uh team. I know that um, you know, this is not easy work. You gotta jump in and, and, and um, you know, anytime we learn new things and do this, but you know, I'm really proud of the work that all of our teachers have done, embracing this, working with our students. And um, Dr. Baker, thank you so much for your leadership. And Linda, thank you for really um, you know, spearheading this. And it's your heart and soul that's helping make this happen in our district. So thank you.
I believe in it. Hundred percent. Thank you.
So I also wanna say, okay.
Go, go ahead, Susie.
I also wanna say thank you uh to NUA and the administration, the teachers, and everybody that has participated in the professional development. Um, definitely the video, when the question was asked earlier about observation, you can actually see it in the kids' faces. They're actually inspired, motivated, and was definitely very engaged. So that says a lot about this um uh program. And so I um, I'm very thrilled and extremely happy to know that the Redwood City School District um was confident in NUA and like NUA is actually very happy to be working with the Redwood City School District. Um, I was taking notes, and when um Eric mentioned about the four Cs, I figure, okay, four Cs is missing a five C because um confidence is definitely there. Again, the district, I feel, has confidence in NUA, and you guys have the confidence, the teachers, the teachers then have confidence with them themselves. So I'm just extremely happy to hear all the wonderful things you guys are doing for Red City. So thank you.
My pleasure.
So um, I was sitting here thinking, I have eighteen years of school, and I had two teachers that believed in me. And I was thinking, how powerful would that be if I had had eighteen, right? So what's, so what you're doing is such a gift. And then I had one question, Linda. Um, how are we gonna assure new teachers get up to speed? So I'm a new teacher at Hoover or one of the first schools. How, how do we get them up to speed so they're?
Awesome. Perfect. So luckily, so we were invited to participate in a summer conference. So anybody who missed our initial training that we just had, May and June for the new teachers, um, sorry, April, May. Um, there's a summer conference, so we're inviting the new administration that's coming. Any new teachers from the, from Kennedy, for example, have invited their teachers. And so we're going to participate in the summer conference. In addition, which was wonderful, NUA recorded, Robert recorded all of our um training sessions that we had, the PD sessions that we had these past um April and May. So that's a good place to start. But then in addition, we have our coaches. And so our staff development coaches are providing that one-on-one support for the new people who are coming in. Um, and so that, and so it's been working. That's what we've been trying to do. Um, and then the other one, that's a wonderful model through NUA, is the co-planning and co-teaching model. So the teachers, a, a new teacher could work with a veteran teacher and plan lessons and learn these strategies together. So they're co-planning, co-teaching, and then they do a kind of like a lesson study cycle, where then they go through and debrief the lesson, how it went, come back, talk about how it's different, or what they would do differently, and then they can teach that same lesson to the next group that they're working with. Um, so those are all the different strategies that we're, we're doing to make sure that the new teachers are on board. Thank you. So I think that's it. I wanna thank you all for your time. And I know, thank you for those who are in New York and um staying up so late for us. We appreciate your time, Eric and Yvette. Stephanie's in Tennessee, I think. Robert in Illinois. Everybody is everywhere. Maria's in Oregon. Or, yes, Oregon. So thank you all so much. I think.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for being here with us.
Thank you.
Looking forward to looking further.
Thank you. Good night.
Talk to you all soon. Thank you.
Bye, Linda.
Great team. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, so that leaves us at six point two, Measure T Oversight, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Linda, do you wanna give me back control of the meeting?
Linda, you're muted.
How do I do that?
At the bottom, you are, if you bring up the participants, and then put in panelists, and click on Me More, and then it says Make Host.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm sorry, before we get into um six point two, we do have some more comment cards coming in about the school boundaries. So for those in the audience that weren't here, um, we did pull item seven point four, the school attendance boundary from the agenda tonight. We will not be discussing it. Um, so please come back next week on Wednesday, the seventeenth, where we'll um be able to discuss that item. We're not gonna be taking the comment cards on that tonight.
Janet, could you also uh uh update people on when they're raising their hand and what they need to do, please?
So yeah, we're not taking raised hands for comment cards. You do need to fill in the cart, the link to the Google Doc that's in the chat that I've been placing. Is that Dennis, what you meant?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so I'm sorry, who's taking the uh Measure T? You're muted, John.
Is Michael in the audience?
Michael here. Michael, to give the presentation. Is he here? Michael Bolander.
See a mic. Um, if you're here, Michael, can you raise your hand or something so we can bring you up? See one. There he is.
Okay, go ahead.
You're up, Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. I'll just give you a warning. My internet connection keeps uh saying it's unstable. So hopefully I don't drop off or anything becomes garbled. So yes, my name is Mike Bolander, and I am the Chair of the Measure T Oversight Committee. Um, I'm also a parent of a first grader and a sixth grader at Roosevelt. And I'm here tonight to present the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen annual report. As way of uh background, on November third, twenty fifteen, Measure T was passed by the voters and authorized the district to issue up to a hundred and ninety-three million in general obligation bonds for the purpose of renovating and modernizing the school sites in the district. Uh, as part of that measure, there was a legal requirement for the board to establish an independent citizens' bond oversight committee as a public accountability measure to ensure that bond proceeds are expended only for the school facilities, projects described in the bond project list. Since its inception, the Oversight Committee has met on twelve occasions. We meet on a quarterly basis. All meetings are open to the public with the primary focus um to confirm that Measure T bond proceeds are expended in a manner consistent with the original ballot language. Uh, two series of bonds have been issued for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven million. Uh expenditures in the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, total seventeen point one million. And total bond expenditures from inception to June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, is about thirty-two point eight million. At the bond uh committees' May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty meeting, the Measure T Citizens Bond Oversight Committee approved the fiscal year eighteen nineteen annual report and reported that, to the best of its knowledge, the district expended the Measure T bond funds only for the specific projects approved by the voters in accordance with Proposition Thirty-nine and outlined in Article eight A, Section one, B, three C of the California Constitution. I'd like to thank the other committee members, uh Jeannie Penos, Lori Bluvus, Richard Delfts, Elizabeth Flagel, Felix Gonzalez, and Rebecca Weekly. I'd also like to thank the board itself, in particular Dennis and Janet, for always being there for us. Um, I'd also like to thank the bond team, Dawn and Will, for providing us with very detailed information at our meetings. And lastly, I'd like to thank the district employees, Priscilla and Olivia. Olivia especially, who uh is so great at organizing our committee. Everything goes uh very smoothly. So with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Comments? Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, I, I would just like, as a member, you know, Janet and I are kind of advisors um to them and answer questions, and Dr. Baker does as well. And, and they're, they're just all very serious and very conscientious and care deeply about their roles and responsibilities. And I, I spent nine years on the Sequoia um Bond Oversight Committee, and I know what it took for Michael to do this report. And this is a very detailed, quite extensive report, which took a significant amount of time. So I wanna not only thank the committee, but thank Michael for all of his work on it, because this really is a lot of work. So thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I wanted to reiterate what Dennis said, too, is um it, it truly is a great group that really is very focused and very serious about their responsibility. Um, and I very much appreciate that. So thanks, Mike, for all that you guys do and your whole committee.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Go ahead, Alisa.
Yeah, and I just also wanna give my thanks both to Janet and Dennis for serving on the committee, as well as Olivia and Priscilla and Dawn and whoever else from a staff perspective is providing information. And thank you, Mike. Um, I agree with Dennis. I know how much work this is. And I, I just wanna say, I think from a community standpoint, we're really fortunate to have community members like you who have stepped up to be on the Oversight Committee because it makes us stronger. It gives us confidence that we're doing a good job spending the money, and I think it gives our public, the taxpayers, the confidence as well. So it's a really important part of democracy that we have this committee, and you're really playing a role in that. So um, I just wanna say thank you very much. Really appreciate the, the whole team, the whole committee. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Mike, for being with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven point one, Discussion of the COVID nineteen Executive Order. Um, that is Linda, right?
Yes, perfect. Um, so as you know, due to COVID nineteen, the California Department of Ed released an executive order that asked our school district, all LEAs, to write a written report um rather than to develop that three-year LCAP that we were uh in the process of developing. Um, so the executive order required our district to explain the changes to any of the program offerings we had due to the school closures. And we had to respond to specific questions. And so there was a template that was provided. And so we were asked to San Mateo County to have stakeholder input. So obviously, our department directors were a part of that, as well as our LCAP steering committee. We had one final meeting, uh mostly to inform them of the changes uh from the um Department of Ed and also uh letting them know that um there was uh some slight changes in what we had originally planned in terms of the funding. And then even since that meeting, there's been a reduction, slight reduction in our um, in our um, our LCAP supplemental concentration funding, which Priscilla will talk about. But um, so the written report I provided to you, um, again, it's a template that was provided by the state. But some of the elements that they wanted us to talk about were to explain the differences in any program offerings in response to the school closures um that had um, and the impact and the closures on students and families. So we talked a lot about um how we came together as a district, um the process that we went through when we informed the community. Um, I went back. It was wonderful. Our, um, I wanna thank uh Jorge Quintana. But our uh webpage had everything in there from, from the first day we started talking about on January twenty-ninth. I don't know if you recall, but January twenty-ninth, um, John probably does use all of these conversations. But uh so much happened, and so quickly things happened, but our community came together. And so I know that, you know, things were far from perfect, but so quickly that our teachers were able to um sec- especially third grade through eighth grade, uh learn some online tools, learn to all of a sudden, my goodness, create a little webinar or screencastifies, little videos, um, teach lessons through this virtual world. Um, and then following the spring break, second grade teachers learned that they would be able to do this as well. So they madly started learning to do this. So I just wanna thank all of the team for coming together and Kyle's tech team for making sure that our students had. And, you know, still areas of need, but again, um, the combined efforts made a big difference, obviously, for our community. In addition, they wanted us to talk about what specific ways we address the needs of our English learners, the foster youth and low-income students. And so I again spoke with um Antonio Perez, with the Director of Student Services, with Fatih Otis, the Director of Community Schools, but how we came together to support our foster youth and the homeless families. Um, we were really, I, I think, very fortunate to have a partnership also with Familias Unidas, who worked immediately and turned their classes to online classes. They learned just as fast as everyone else. And they now, and you saw some of those videos of now parents participating on their virtual classes. So they held their sessions, but they just did it virtually and then taught parents along as they were teaching those lessons, how to use the tech tools. So I thought that that was amazing. Again, another example of everybody pulling together for the needs of our, our community. Um, the LEA continued to provide high-quality distance learning opportunities a lot because of what was happening with our uh tech team and our staff development team, supporting our teachers as much as possible. Um, we almost immediately created some professional learning opportunities for teachers. Um, so we, I think we ended up having a packet of two to three weeks to initially start until the teachers could get into um some of the PD offerings that we were providing. And then um they, and the teachers worked together. I talked to some teachers who were teaching each other how to do things, and they shared some videos across the district, which was amazing that they were creating. So wonderful. Uh, and we had to also respond to how we were providing school meals and maintaining social distances or distances during those uh times we were passing meals, passing out meals. Um, I did uh receive an email from Dennis. He wanted me to make sure I clarified which Dennis I did. Uh, so in the final uh version of this, you will see that it's explained that although we provided meals Monday through Wednesday, in fact, on Wednesday, parents were able to pick up meals for Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So I wanted to make sure that was clarified. And that this will hopefully continue because, through the summer, because of a waiver that we're applying for. Um, and then in terms of the supervision for students, obviously, that still continues to be an area of need. There were some students that we, although continued uh up, um, attempts were made to communicate with all families, there were still some families that um we needed to continually um address. And so with the support of the Director of Student Services, Director of Community Schools, uh the newcomer instructional assistants, other support staff, we reached out to as many parents as we could, um continuing to provide um again, specific um evening sessions, again, through Familias Unidas for the newcomer families. And we're trying to teach the newcomer families as well, who are just arriving. Even through this COVID nineteen, we were still enrolling newcomer families. And so the newcomer instructional assistants and Familias Unidas supported that group as well. Um, so it was just a, an, an opportunity to review what we had been doing. Um, again, it leaves us with next steps, obviously, for what we need to do for next year. But so right now, rather than to submit a three-year LCAP, this is the form that we complete. And then Priscilla's gonna talk about the budget aspect of it. But we didn't have an opportunity to have our stakeholder engagement meetings throughout this, prior to COVID nineteen. Um, and so we had um, actually did quite a bit of work, and we were ready to write it when we were asked not to. So, but that's okay. Actually saved us a lot of time, to be honest, for right now, um, which was needed so we could focus on um supporting teachers and their families. I don't know if there's any questions about that or not.
Linda, um, I, I first thank you for all your work on this. I um, the form that's on the website has not been updated, so.
Yes, not the final one. We can't.
Okay.
Couldn't change that one, but I, for this, is there a final approval for this one? I can't remember, John, if we have to do a final approval. If we do, then the next one you see will have all the changes on there.
Okay, so my, one of my questions, and maybe it's on the final one, is we say there were a total of two thousand meals being served, but it doesn't say, is that per day, per week, per month? So do you, could you tell us the answer to that?
Can't. I have to go back to my notes, okay? So I think it was four hundreds um a day, up to four hundred a day. Uh, let me look for that.
We asked about it before. It was. We asked about it before. It was, you know, Wednesdays were higher because they were picking up for Thursday and Friday as well.
You can send that offline.
Okay, I was looking at the nutrition because they filled out. So they... Let's see if I can do a total. I don't see the total on there.
Okay.
So I can find out where I... I don't know, Dennis. I'll have to get back to you on that one, okay? Because I'm looking at their notes, but it says 2,000, but I don't know if that was over the course of a... No, those are for the waivers. I'll have to get back to you on that, okay?
I would just suggest putting in the context of it. Thank you. And again, and also thank you to all the people that have been distributing the lunches and breakfast. I mean, they're just so happy and smiling and so cordial. And I mean, they're just ambassadors for the school district.
Linda, thanks for all your work on this.
Sure.
You know, just so much. And then to have to pivot on this one also.
Thanks for joining in all our LCAP Steering Committee meetings. Thank you, Alisa too. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the budget update. Priscilla? You're muted.
Okay. Everyone, so I am going to present to you the proposed budget for 2020-21. And this is for the required public discussion and public hearing. So I'm going to share with you my PowerPoint. And this one is also posted on the agenda online for others to be able to view. So, hold on one second.
So, Priscilla, this is Kyle. I'm going to need to make you the host. So you present your screen. And then when you're done, you just hand it back to me, okay?
Okay.
All right.
So... I do, here, I can't open it.
So you should now have the green button at the bottom to share your screen.
Okay, I think I opened my screen too early. I should... Hold on. So... So I will click on the share screen button. And... So I am not seeing my PowerPoint.
You need to maybe pull it up front. So we still see you.
Yeah, you know, I click on share, but I don't see the PowerPoint on my screen to be able to click on. I only see...
Okay, so then why don't we do this? Why don't you send it to me very quickly and then make me back the host and I will post it up?
Okay, so I think Eliana has it. And if you open also the... The, what's posted on the agenda, that's the PowerPoint.
Okay. Okay.
But I'm hoping I can navigate through it myself. So I would be able to discuss it with everyone.
Do you want me to share my screen?
That would be great, actually.
Elliot, is that too much for you, though? I know you've got...
Yeah, so let me try to do it. So... This is my first time, so pardon me. I'm not sure that I'm doing it right. So... So here's screen. Okay, I got it.
There we go.
All right, I'm sorry. Okay, so are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Okay, so let me make it bigger. And... Okay, so although there's so many uncertainties right now with our budget, the timelines have not changed. So we are presenting to you the 2021, and it needs to be submitted to the County Office of Education by July 1. So for this evening, for the public hearing, I would like to go over all the Redwood City School District funds. We have the General Fund, which is the main operating fund for the district, where the, you know, salaries for classroom teachers and for the expenditures for all departments are accounted for. And we have also the Child Development Fund for our preschool programs, the Cafeteria Fund for the Child Nutrition Services, and the Forward Maintenance Fund for maintenance of our facilities, the Building Fund, which is where the proceeds of all the Measurty General Obligation Bond issuance are accounted for. And we have the Capital Facilities Fund, where we account for the developer fees that we've collected. And we're also keeping all the accumulated Community Redevelopment Fund allocations that we have received and continue to receive for the next 10 years. And then we have a special reserve for capital outlay projects, which are mainly the interest earnings from this being accumulated for several years. And these are for capital outlay purposes only. So I'm going to also go over the basic aid status for Redwood City School District. Are we going to continue to maintain the basic aid status for the next two years? And I'm going to also talk about the impact of the Governor's May Revised Budget to the Redwood City School District. So one of the requirements for the submission of the budget is also multi-year projections and information about the reserve levels for the current year and the next two years. Also, for information only, being a basic aid district, I would like to show you the historical values of property assessment role in Redwood City, just to get an understanding of why we made certain assumptions for property taxes as a basic aid district. Then we'll talk about what are the next step after the adoption of the proposed budget. So I noticed we have many people participating for this public hearing. So these next two slides that I have are always there. It's just explaining why we have to develop the budget. So it's mandated by education code as a public school. And so the budget must conform to the criterias and standards adopted by the State Board of Education or the California Department of Education. So the budget must encompass all the district's goals and missions, the educational programs, as reflected in our Local Control Accountability Plan that Dr. Montes have talked about. Although the submission of these report was delayed to December 15, we are also looking at all our programs and making sure that these expenditures and revenues for these programs are included in the budget. So along with these information to be presented is the estimated actuals of the current year. So these numbers are pre-closing numbers. It reflects the revenues and expenditures for the 2019-20 year. And then it also shows the budget year 2021 and then two more years. So this report that we will submit to the County Office of Education will be reviewed by the County Office and the Department of Education as part of their fiscal oversight responsibilities. So here's the timeline. So we developed the budget as early as the January of this year. However, when we, you know, when we are starting to develop the budget based on the Governor's January proposal, we then coronavirus outbreak happened. And so the May revised budget is completely different from what we know in January. So it's also a requirement that we will publish in a newspaper of general circulation the dates for public inspection, which is June 10th and the public hearing today, and then when it's going to be adopted by the board. And we have that scheduled on June 24. As I mentioned, the timeline for submission to the County Office didn't change. It's July 1. And then we have also a, there's also an ed code requirement that once the state budget is enacted, the district has 45 days to make revisions to the adopted budget if there are material changes in the budget assumptions made. So with that, as everyone knows, 2021 is not a normal year. So the COVID-19 pandemic had heavily impacted the economy and the Child Fund for the State of California. So the Governor's May Revision actually suspends the 2.31% COLA and includes a 10% cut to the local control funding formula. So at first, when we're looking at this, it appears like it does not impact Redwood City School District because we're no longer a state aid district or also because we transitioned to a basic aid district in 2019-20. But with these proposals, there's also actual an impact on basic aid district because the minimum state aid that is given to basic aid districts, that's also reduced by 10%. The minimum state aid is the constitutional guarantee of $120 per ABA for all school district or the 2012-13 categorical funding, which is guaranteed and was held harmless when the local control funding formula was implemented. So Redwood City School District is getting about $12.8 million in minimum state aid. So that portion of the district's revenue is also cut by 10%. So the other provisions in the Governor's May Revision is the cash deferrals. So these will have an impact to all school districts, and it does not begin just in 2021 fiscal year. So it actually starts in this year in 1920. So the state aid, the $12.8 million that I mentioned for Redwood City School District, that's the only amount that we're getting from the state, plus, of course, the education protection account. So the apportionment that we should be receiving in June will not be received this year and will be deferred to July. And then in 2021, it's not just one month of allocation, but the proposal was April, May, and June will be deferred to July. Or we're not sure whether it's going to be longer. During the Great Recession, this happened, and so there's multiple deferrals. And so cash flow is a problem for most districts. And so others are actually looking at borrowings to make sure that they have a positive cash balance when they close the 2019-20 books. So as you will see, part of the items that is presented by the administration for the board will be a resolution for inter-fund borrowing, just in case we will need it. But as of today, we're looking at our cash balance. And it doesn't look like we will be needing an inter-fund temporary borrowing. But just in case we do, the San Mateo County Controller's Office will not allow us to have a negative cash balance in any fund. So that resolution would just be there as a standby, just in case we would need it when we actually closed the books for 2019-20. So the other part that is included in the May Revision is the delay in the submission, the tax payments deferral to July 15. So because of these, and because the personal income tax generates the largest share of this State General Fund, that's one of the reasons that we might have an August revision of the state budget. So in normal years, we have the Governor's January proposal, and then we have the May revised, and then the budget will be enacted. But at this point, because the state does not know how much in revenues are they going to receive, and we might have an August revision or maybe a September revision. And by then, we also are going to look at the budget assumptions that we made for the Redwood City School District. And it could be completely different from what we're presenting today. So just so everyone know that that might happen, and we will have to make, again, another presentation to the board if there are significant change from what we are proposing to be adopted today. So, okay, I'm sorry, it went back to the other... So that's in the May Revision. And again, the LCAP is, the submission is extended to December 15. So but that's not all bad news for the May Revision for us. So actually, there were some flexibility provisions that are included in the May revised budget that really help all school districts, including basic aid school districts. So part of the Governor's budget in May includes a buy-down of the employer rate for Calpers and Calsters. And the state is also made payment to fund the unfunded liability portion of Calpers and Calsters, which resulted in a significant decline in the country's employer rate. So in January, we were forecasting that the 2021 Calsters' employer rate is 18.4. And then it's down to 16.15. 2122 is down from 18.2 to 16.02. The same thing with the Calpers' employer rate. So this is a significant help for us. And then the other part of the help that the government prompts to public education is the increase in per-pupil funding for special education. So this was increased to 645 per ADA, I think, before it was like 570 something per ADA. So but, and based on a three-year rolling average. So however, this is not something that's directly given to school districts. This is funded through SALPA. SALPA, the Special Education Local Plan Area, so through the County Office of Education. So the way that SALPA allocates funding to its member districts are different from county to county. So when we receive the allocation for Redwood City School District, and we, there's really not a significant increase to our funding. We are actually looking at about $190,000, which is actually offset by the decline in the federal funding for special education. So there was really, the net amount is not a really significant help for our district. And it does not significantly reduce the contribution from unrestricted general fund to the special education program. And then, and then there's also the flexibility about routine restricted maintenance account. So the law for these RMA account is that when a school district has buildings, has modernized its buildings or constructed facilities using or partly using estate dollars, then you're required to contribute 3% of your total expenditures to routine restricted maintenance account. So there was some flexibility here that there were some expenditures that are excluded in the calculation that also help for budgeting purposes. So, so this slide summarizes what the May Revision... So, so this slide summarizes what, what the may revision. Governor's proposal means to Redwood City School District as a basic aid district. So in terms of the ten percent reduction in general to LCFF funding. It just, it just widens the gap between a non-basic aid district to a basic aid district. Without really providing additional funding to a basic aid district. So if you recall in our analogy in the past, when we're talking about the basic aid status. The way a basic aid school district is determined is by comparing the LCFF entitlement here. Net of the minimum state aid compared to your total property taxes. And so if the taxes exceed the calculation, then the district becomes basic aid. So again, with our bucket analogy, so what happened with the ten percent reduction? It is just made this bucket, your LCFF calculation smaller. So even if you pour in the same amount of property taxes, you know, it just makes you more basic aid. Without necessarily adding more funding because your calculation for, or your estimate of property taxes remain the same. So that's what happened with us. So other that, and of course, we have the fair share reduction. So that's the one point two million reduction to our minimum state aid. And then the third impact also is that our three district authorized charter schools, they are not basic aid. So they have to recalculate also their LCFF funding with a ten percent reduction. So then because they strength, their LCFF funding is reduced. So when we calculate in lieu taxes, their proportionate share of the property taxes is also adjusted down. So that's kind of the impact of the may revision to, to our district. So before I go to the numbers, I would just wanted to show the student population for the current year. So this is our enrollment count, so based on October two thousand nineteen cow pads. So our total enrollment is seven thousand one hundred sixty nine and this one is by school site. The unduplicated pupil percentage is sixty percent. So out of our seven thousand one hundred ninety six. We have four thousand three hundred one students that are English language learner. Or those that qualifies for free and reduced price lunch and foster U. So that's our percentage for the, for the current year. So in our projection for the next two years, we're keeping that sixty percent. But of course, adjusted to our projected decline in enrollment. So this is our projection for enrollment. So like I mentioned for two thousand nineteen twenty. We are at seven thousand one hundred sixty nine and we're in, the projection is a continuous decline in enrollment. This is our attendance rate. So this is our projected average daily attendance. So now going back to the general fund. So for twenty twenty one, the total revenue that's projected is ninety nine point five million. So the biggest chunk of these revenue for the general fund is the property taxes that we're getting. So these blue line up to here supplemental concentration grant. That's funded by property taxes except for the minimum state aid. This is the portion and the education protection account that we're getting from the state. These are property supplemental and, and this blue part, part of the pie are funded from property taxes. So these two are the ones that are subject to deferral by the state and that was subject to ten percent reduction. So then we get our special ed taxes. We have four percent in federal revenue. One percent for lottery, other state revenue six percent. We get two percent from our MSHU parcel taxes. This is net of what we share with our charter schools. And then we have local donations and grants from local sources. So for twenty twenty one, the proposed budget is ninety nine point five million. So what's, what's new in the twenty twenty one budget compared to what we have presented to you at second interim? Of course, it is are the factors that are included in the governor's may revise state budget proposal. And then we also have the four percent cost of negotiation settlement. With the Redwood City Teachers Association. So at this time during budget development, this is the only union negotiation that was settled. And so that's incorporated in our budget. So the other thing that's new in this budget is the covid nineteen related expenditures. So when we are identifying what are the things that we must do for twenty twenty one. You know, we have identified about eight hundred seventy thousand dollars in covid related expenditures. Such as, you know, like overtime for, for staff or doing the deep cleaning. Purchasing PPE, equipments, laptops, we need to equip our staff to be able to work at home. What are the expenses related to providing blended learning next years? And so when we work with all the departments, we came up with about eight hundred seventy thousand. And of course, they're probably gonna be more than that, but as of the time that we're developing the budget. That's what we have incorporated in here. So but for these expenditure, we are hoping that we will be able to get some help from the federal government. So we've applied for FEMA funding and submitted the whole eight hundred seventy thousand to FEMA. Hopefully that it will be reimbursed, but there's no guarantee for that. Because they, once we submit the list, they have to really review it. And then determine which items are eligible for funding. And which of those items are not gonna be reimbursed. So even assuming that the whole eight hundred seventy thousand that we've submitted is determined to be eligible. They're not gonna return the whole eight hundred seventy thousand. They usually only reimburse up to seventy five percent of the claims. And there is no, it's not immediate also. Sometimes it takes years to be able to get back your funding. So we are watching this and working with FEMA and with the California Emergency Office. To, to follow up on our claims. We have an initial communication with the FEMA representative. And, you know, the, the, that communication, their first look. They have not seen any invoices, they have not seen any of the backup documentations yet, but they're saying some. Or actually, most of the claims, they're saying those are just increasing operational costs. That doesn't appear to be eligible for funding, but that's just our initial communication. We're still gonna work with, with them. And with the California rap. Hopefully, if we provide more documentation that eventually they will consider at least substantially. All of our claims would be reimbursable. So, but that's in the twenty twenty one budget. So what's not included in this proposed budget, of course, are the carryover balances. That are in the two thousand nineteen twenty budget, carryovers from eighteen nineteen that are included in the nineteen twenty budget. So those were taken out. We are also, except for one grant, and I'm gonna talk about that later. We are not putting in carryover balances because we're still in the process. We're, we're still gonna be working on closing the two thousand nineteen twenty books. So any carryover balances will be included at our first interim adjustment. We also receive one time revenues and so we also eliminated those one time revenues. And the related expenditures for those one time revenues. And this district has always had that policy that for local donations and contributions. If we have not received a written commitment for continuing the funding. We are not including that in the proposed budget. So those again would be first interim adjustment to the budget once we receive those grant awards. The other item that's not included in twenty twenty one, you must have heard about the Federal CARES Act. So in the may revision, in the governor's may revision, they're also talking about additional funding. From the federal government. There's actually like two, you know, pots of fundings. For the, for the CARES Act, one is they call the E S S E R or elementary and secondary. Is cool emergency relief and there's also funding for loss of mitigation of. Learning loss or something. So but the, the recommendation from the County Office of Ed. Is not to include this in the twenty twenty one budget yet until we know more information about. About how this would actually be allocated. So right now, if you are looking at some of the, like Department of Education. If you are searching the Federal CARES Act, there's a calculation there about what Redwood City is gonna get. You'll see like a one point one million, but right now, it's quite contentious. The way they're proposing to allocate the federal funds. So like for example, the, the, the loss mitigation stimulus. It is, the proposal for allocation is based on the, the districts. That have constant high concentration of unduplicated pupils and that will be us. And then there's also another proposal to base it on students with special needs. And that's also us. And then there's the one that's based on title one, which also Redwood City School District qualifies. However, there are districts that are questioning that allocation. Because why is it limited to those districts when everyone is hurting due to covid nineteen? So, so the recommendation is not to include it yet on the twenty twenty one budget. The other thing too is the S R funds, if you have to apply for it. And the application process is not yet open through the Department of Education website. So that's not purposely included in the twenty twenty one budget. So I'm sorry. So the other one, we still have pending negotiations for the other two collective bargaining units. The C S E A and R C A A. So those are not included in the expenditures for the twenty twenty one budget. So this slide shows the comparison between the revenues in two thousand nineteen twenty. And then twenty twenty one. So as I mentioned, the total revenue for twenty twenty one is ninety nine point five million. So and these are the major categories of our revenues. We have the property taxes. The minimum state aid, that's a the hold harmless or constitutional guarantee, the supplemental concentration grant. Federal, state, first person on behalf, local revenue. This one, you can just ignore it. This is just not a real budget. It's disclosure, it's a required disclosure. And it's actually nets to zero because there's exactly the same amount budgeted for expenditure. So anyway, we start with the property taxes. There is a decrease of one point five. But this is actually large debit and credit items. So the big chunk of these is the loss of supplemental taxes. So if, you know, with the over seventy million in property taxes that we're receiving. There is an item there that's called supplemental taxes. So that's about six million for the Redwood City School District. That supplemental taxes, you only qualify to receive that if you are not basic aid in the prior year. So because we are basic aid in two thousand nineteen twenty, in twenty twenty one, we don't qualify for that six million anymore. So that was taken out. However, you will see only one point five. Because in twenty twenty one, we projected still a five percent growth in property taxes. So those two kind of netted each other. So you only see instead of a six million reduction, you'll see a one point five. And of course, our share, our, the in lieu taxes shared to the charter schools was also adjusted. So that this is the net effect of these three big ticket items. And then the minimum state aid, this is the impact to us. This is our fair share of the ten percent statewide reduction. And then our supplemental and concentration grant, this is what Dr. Mendez mentioned at the beginning. We were working on the LCAP thinking that we are gonna have eight point two million in supplemental and concentration grant. With a ten percent cap, it's down by about six hundred thousand. State revenues, also federal revenues, this one. We assume flat funding for federal revenue, but there were some one time items that are in nineteen twenty. That's eliminated in twenty twenty one. And then all the same thing with the state revenues. There's one time grant here in nineteen twenty of about one point two million. And then some other adjustment that resulted to a reduction of one point eight in states. So I'm gonna skip stores and purse on behalf. So again, this one is on the local revenues. Like I mentioned earlier, we don't budget it if we don't have a written commitment or a written grant award. And we will just make an adjustment later on, once we receive them. So this is the revenue, revenue between these two fiscal years. So then we'll go to the general fund expenditures. As you can see right away here. Our expenditure is one hundred four point five million compared to ninety nine point five million in revenue. So we're have about five million in operating deficit. So the biggest, again, a portion of our expenditures is the certificated salaries, classified and employee benefits. This is about eighty five percent of our total budget. And then we have services and other operating expenditures, books and supplies, other outgo are. Like our payment to the County Office of Education when we send our kids to their program. So that's hundred four point five for twenty twenty one. So again, comparing the expenditures in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty one, here are the increases and decreases. So the increase in certified salaries is primarily that four percent compensation increase. Based on the RCTA settlement. So in the salary portion, that's about one point twenty five million. But of course, there are related expenditures to that, like the statutory benefits. It's also increased, which is about three hundred thousand. And then we have a one point five step on column adjustment that we have incorporated in the twenty twenty one budget. And also in the subsequent two years. And then there's some minor staffing adjustments. So the net increase in certified salaries is about one point eight million. Here also in classified, there's no settlement. So it's a step on column adjustment and then there were some changes in staffing. So by the time we submit the details, we can provide you with FTE details. On the June twenty four board meeting. Employee benefits, it decreased by hundred forty seven. But that again is the net effect of several factors. The Sturson first employer contribution. That was a significant amount of reduction that we received with the reduction in employer. And the Sturson first employer rate, but we also budgeted increases in health and welfare. And other payroll rates, like the worker's comp rate is increased this year. And, and then other payroll related mandatory benefits. So. So. Okay, going back to the expenditures. So anyway, then books and supplies, these two items is kind of related to the elimination of local donations. And 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 removal of one time revenues and carryover balances. And then for capital outlay, we're not budgeting anything for two thousand twenty one. So this is one time in nineteen twenty. And actually, this is this amount that we spent here in nineteen twenty for capital outlay. Is that the energy, Energy Jobs Act, which is part of the bond program. So that's fully spent now in nineteen twenty. So there is no capital outlay in two thousand twenty one. And then the rest are minor adjustment with the direct and indirect cost rates for between restricted programs. So that's basically our general fund expenditures. Now, I wanted to go over the multi-year budget assumptions. So like I mentioned, we're required to provide three years of projections for the county office of education. So here is our enrollment for that projection that I've mentioned. So for two thousand twenty one, we're down to seven thousand thirty and six thousand eight hundred and six seven. Oh, four in two thousand two twenty three. This projection, it was based on the moderate. A projection with that was submitted to us by our consultant. So there were two versions, there's the conservative and a moderate, we're using the moderate projections in this. For the for budget purposes. And then the property tax growth. We projected five percent for two thousand twenty one and then zero for twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. So when we with the the C B O Sir Chief Business Officials met with. With the county assessor's office and the county controller's office. And we asked them what their projection is for two thousand twenty one. And they're saying that they're still projecting between five to six percent growth in property taxes for two thousand twenty one. So we budgeted five percent. This is a reduction on what we projected that second interim, because we're projecting six percent. Because our historical growth for Redwood City is about eight point five percent. So we reduce it down to five percent. For twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three, that's also a recommendation to budget for zero cola. Because with COVID nineteen and with what's happening in the economy, that there could be some. Request for reassessment of property values. And there there might be some adjustment down in values that would. That that could show, you know, no growth overall. Although of course, constructions and building and new buildings, new facilities will still be happening. But in this projection, we're we're assuming that the growth due to addition of these buildings would offset adjustment down. Or property values. So then, cost of living adjustment for the revenues, we're not adjusting it up. It's just flat and the zero cola is projected for our revenues. And then on the expenditure expenditure side, we have the one year only four percent increase for R C T A. And then we were just budgeting for ongoing cost of the four percent, but zero increase in the twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. Fiscal years. Step on column, we didn't change that estimate, one point five each year. And then health and welfare, five percent. And the inflation cost or the California price index is added. Is a factor in the calculation of our operating costs. So these are assumptions that we used. And this is how our general fund would look like for the current year and the next two years. So for these projections, so this is two thousand twenty one, you would notice that the revenue now is one hundred one. Instead of a ninety nine point five here. And that's because of these two point four million that we still need to be transferred from the R D A funds. So if essentially without the two point four transfer here, our deficit is about five million. So then this line item here, which also contributed to the increase in the operating deficit. Is the elimination of the lease earnings that we're projecting for a close site. So the Adelante. The former Adelante school site is, you know, it's now, we eliminated the the lease revenue there with Stanford. Is strat, what is Stratford Schools not moving forward with the lease agreement. But we're assuming that in twenty one, twenty two, all of our close school sites will again be be leased out. So and then these are certified salaries. And so I wanted to go to the next slide to show you what our concerns are regarding the general fund. So these projections shows that we are still dependent on the R D A funds. And actually, in two thousand two, twenty three, we need more than just two point four. So the encircling move down, but we're actually going to be needing six point six million. From the twenty, from the R D A funds to even just barely meet the three percent minimum reserve requirement. So the state requires us to maintain a reserve level for economic uncertainties equivalent to three percent of your total expenditures. So that's the minimum level and it should be more, especially for us, basic aid district. But even with these transfers, we are, you know, using up our ending balance. As you can see here, the unrestricted general fund ending balance nine point seven, now it's down to six point nine to four point eight. And so we have now a declining reserve level as well because of all these expenditures that are now included in the budget. So if I am to kind of just pick up the big ticket items, why we have more in operating deficit compared to the second interim presentation. It's because of one point two million is the reduction of our minimum state aid guarantee. We have about one point five million in costs for the R C T A settlement. And then we have incorporated about eight hundred seventy thousand in COVID nineteen related expenditures. And then we've lost approximately one point two million in lease income for the former Adelante school location. So that's kind of, you know, what 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 were the reason for the increase in the operating deficit for the general fund? So. So that I wanted to just show you, this is a historical values of property assessment. So I just wanted to show these to determine whether a zero percent in our projection for property taxes is aggressive or conservative. So I would like to go back to two thousand seven, eight during the Great Recession. It started in December two thousand seven. So at that time, you know, the property, the percentage of growth in property values is like around seven, eight percent. So in during, when the Great Recession started, we are at eight point fifty one percent. As was was indicated by the assessor's office, you don't feel the impact right right away for basic aid districts. So relying on property taxes. Because it takes about eighteen months to process an adjustment down in property taxes. So as you can see here, it started in seventeen eighteen, it still have a growth in taxes. And then it is declining and it went actually negative in two thousand ten, eleven, then it started to move back up. So would this be a reflection of what it will be for us? Maybe not, because thirteen years ago, Redwood City School District is completely different in terms of economy and in terms of instructions. And so this is just showing where we were during the Great Recession. But on the average, a twenty year average, the growth is six point ninety two. And a ten year average is six point fifteen. If you're just looking at the past five years, it's high at nine point twenty nine percent. So so that's where we are on the property assessment role. Now I would like to show you all of the school districts funds. So these are our seven funds. All of the, we talk about the general fund extensively. And so for the other funds, like our child development, you'll notice there is about five hundred thousand decrease in revenues. And a corresponding decrease in expenditures here only because we didn't get a confirmation of the Big Left Grant. But now we know we got it and so that would be included in here for next but first interim. And then deferred maintenance is, you know, like businesses useful, building fund, they are projecting to spend about seventy five million in two thousand twenty one. That leaves the bond project fund to about thirty three point seven million. For our developer fees, we have already contributed everything that we're supposed to provide to the bond project. So this is the projected ending balance for our one twenty five, including the R D A combined. And then our specialty server at two point one. So with all our funds, of course, we're concerned about the general fund, but we're also concerned about the cafeteria program. So for estimated actuals for nineteen twenty, we're showing a deficit of about nine hundred seventy thousand. And so in two thousand twenty one, we are projecting a deficit of one point two. As you can see, there's a very minimal ending balance projected for the cafeteria fund. So everyone involved, you know, we are going to be really looking at the program. We are gonna. Be meeting and looking at how we can restructure and how we can better serve the students. And at the same time, be physically, fiscally is stable. So this is just the area for the other funds, it's on the cafeteria third, in the cafeteria fund. That potentially may need a subsidy or an additional contribution from the general fund to keep us going in our on our cafeteria program. So those are all the district funds. So what's next for us with all the these uncertainties? So the legislature must approve the state budget by June fifteen. So otherwise, they might have the risk of not getting paid. But it could be later or it could, they may adopt the state budget later on. And then the governor, of course, has until June thirty. Us of now, as I've mentioned, I don't think I've mentioned it, but anyway, there is already a disagreement. Between the Senate Budget Committee, so that they are not in agreement with the ten percent cut proposed by the governor. So they're saying that we need to fully fund L C F F. But there's a trigger provision in their proposal that they will eliminate the ten percent reduction. If if the state is going to receive sufficient federal additional funding from the federal government to compensate the compensate the ten percent reduction. So all of these, you know, we hopefully it will be settled and we will know more about the budget and we can make changes. If we get the August revision or whenever we get more details about the final. Enacted budget. As far as the district, we are going to present again the the proposed budget for adoption on June twenty four. And as I mentioned, we have forty five calendar days from the time the state budget is enacted to make revision. And then we are working on closing the two thousand nineteen twenty box. Again, the timeline for closing is also the same on September fifteen. So these are the things that we need to do. And I think this is my last presentation. I just wanted to thank everyone for their cooperation and support behind the scene here. Our staff in the business office and the C N S, they are there for us. And this year has been very challenging with everyone working at home and trying to meet the deadlines. And we thank all of the staff and of course, the departments and school sites for their cooperation and support. So I'm gonna close these and I will be answering any questions that you may have on the proposed budget.
So we did have one speaker's card on this item and it it was Sue Jorgensen and I don't see her in the audience anymore. But if other board members wanted to have, if you have any questions or comments. Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, so first, thank you very much. As everybody knows, Maria and I are on the budget subcommittee with Dr. Baker. And so we went over the budget book with Priscilla. And you know, this is a massive undertaking in a normal year. And now with trying to do this remotely, it's it's just probably two X harder. So just thank you to all your team. One question I had is I was perusing one of the charter's board presentation and they were applying or had applied for the paycheck protection plan. Which I was surprised that they could do that. Is that something we can do or do they get special treatment?
Um, I didn't have a chance to look at that, Dennis, but I will report out on that. I don't know how that was funded for them. I was thinking that maybe they're doing the same thing as what we did, like submitting a claim for reimbursements. I I really don't have.
Okay.
About that.
That's fine.
We will ask.
That's fine. And my guess is you haven't had a chance to do the cash flow projection for April through June of two thousand twenty one, because that's like years away where we are. But I'd be curious with them deferring the cash, are we going to have to borrow money or transfer money from one fund to another?
Most likely, we don't have to because the state aid portion that we're getting is very little. But I am kind of concerned about the property taxes that we will be getting. Will that come to us in time? Because in the past years, we are a theater district, a county. And so we're always getting all of our property taxes by June thirty. But we know that most counties are also struggling with cash flow and so we're not sure about that. So I'm just putting that on standby just if we need to borrow.
Okay. And then you talked about reduced enrollment. And I don't want to be the messenger of doom, but you know, we we typically use a demographer and we come up with those numbers. But the huge unknown we have right now is with COVID, how many families are going to move out of the area? Because they're going to need to move in with family members, so they have childcare or they can find a job. So that number could actually be worse, but obviously, we don't have any ability to know what that is, but it's just something we have to keep an eye on. And then when you talked about the donations in the budget, you talked about our process that we only put down what people have committed. The thing I would add to that is if you go down that list, everybody that has committed is 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 significant reduction from previous years. So so even the people who have committed is less money, which again, I understand. And then if you go to most basic aid districts, they usually have higher reserves. And they have higher reserves because when the assessments, when properties get reassessed, they have this huge financial hit. And our reserves are a little on the light side, so most of them are around, I think, fifteen percent if you if you look. Just to reiterate your, I'm almost done, to reiterate your, reiterate your point. If you think back, we were expecting to have three point one million of lease revenue. And in this year, we're only going to have seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a two point four million gap. And then the future years, it's it's the same gap. And the only thing I would say about property taxes is in two thousand eight, that was really a financial crisis. And most people around here really, I mean, you were affected because you had investments, but you weren't losing your jobs and you weren't taking cut and pay, et cetera. So so I think now that everybody has figured out this is a recession, that that number could actually be bigger than historical. But again, I can't tell you what it's going to be, so I think what you've done is fine. And I do think as a board, not tonight, but I think we need to have an agenda and to talk about. Maybe have the cafeteria committee come back and report. How do we stop, you know, we're having deficits of a million dollars a year. And that says that at the end of this year, we're going to have to subsidize it. We don't have the ability to subsidize it. Or we may decide we have to because it's such a necessary thing for our students. And we're in this time where we can't really raise the price because parents don't have money. But I think that would be worthy of the cafeteria committee coming back with kind of their thoughts. And that's all I had. And again, thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you.
I don't know if the raised hand Kyle is Sue Jorgensen.
I unfortunately can't do that right now because Priscilla is the host of the meeting. If she wants to turn it back over to me, I can do it.
So.
So you just find me in the panelist and click on the more button and then it should say make host.
So it's not on the chat? I should.
No, you go to, if you open participants at the bottom and then on panelists.
Okay.
And then if you hover over my name and click more, and then there should be one that says make host.
So I'm looking under participants and.
Panelists.
Panelists.
Panelists at the top.
Okay.
And then that should give you the list of those. And then if you hover over my name where it says more.
Okay.
Click the down arrow and it says make host.
So under more, I see chat asked to start.
There we go. We got it? No, it's gotta be make host.
Oh, make host, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna click change host?
Yep.
Okay.
Here we go. Thank you.
Oh, and the hand's not raised anymore, so.
But I'm gonna go down and see if I can find it. I do not find it in the list.
Okay. Alyssa, were you about to make a comment?
Yeah, so maybe I'll make a comment. Maybe if you'll hop back on while I do this. So first of all, thank you very much, Priscilla and your team. Thanks, Dennis and Maria, for serving on the budget committee. Appreciate that. I had just a couple of questions and comments. And I, Dennis, I completely agree with everything you said. So I won't repeat all of that. But I, I do want to emphasize, I think we do need to take a look at our reserves and try to build those up over the next few years because getting down close to 3% is not going to be good for a basic aid district. As Dennis said, most of them are closer to 15%. So we're going to need to really figure out how do we do that? And I know this is not the year to do that, but we are going to need to do that. And then I did have a question on the concentration supplemental money. What is our unduplicated count at this point? Because if you look at our budget, that's 8% of our budget. And it's a really important part of the money that we're spending on those kid, you know, the specific kids that it's designed for. And I know we were getting low on the concentration and I'm just curious where we're at. Linda, Priscilla, do you know? And I, and I think we need to kind of forecast that as we think ahead because we get, we could get to a point where we're only getting supplemental and not concentration. And I don't know how close we are to that. Do you know off the top of your heads? And if not, we can look into that for a later conversation.
I don't know the number, I don't know the projections for next year, actually. This year, they were at 37%, but I don't. And 54 for economically disadvantaged or thereabouts. But I don't know the projections for next year.
Yeah.
Right, because we.
We're gonna bring back additional information about that.
Okay. Because as, as you know, for concentration, you know, when it drops below 55%, we're going to lose that. And that, that'll be several million dollars. That's going to be a lot of money for us. We need to consider that. And then I was wondering on the, the me too portion of the 4% raise, was that included in this budget anywhere? That, so for the classified and management?
Yeah, so what happened is because what I did, it's not in the index expenditure, it's not included in the budget expenditures. So what is, what I've done is to estimate what would the cost be of a me too and assign that dollar amount in the components of fund balance. So that's actually on, also subject to, to public discussion and public hearing. So that's actually Agenda Item 7.3. We are going to look at the details on what is in the fund balance for the general fund. So. So, so those, the cost is, is included in the fund balance. So we set aside dollar amount.
Okay. I, I, I thought that was the case. I just wanted to double check because, you know, we assume that will happen. So that's kind of a known, known. It's just a matter of when. So, okay, good. That, that makes me feel better about the budget. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, and I think that's all I had. Just thanks again for all your work. I know this is very time consuming.
So I don't know if Maria or Cecilia had any comments.
I just wanted to say thank you to Priscilla and her team. As Dennis said, this is a big undertaking. So thank you very much for all your hard work and for putting it all together. That's all.
I'll let the staff know. Thank you.
Of course, I would like to say thank you as well. I do know, coming from an employee that works with a CBO, I know how much work you guys put out along with your business, the business office. So yeah, thank you very much for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. I'll just echo that. I know I'm so glad to have you onboard through this time especially. We really, really glad you're here. I mentioned to somebody earlier that I actually had a dream or maybe a nightmare that you resigned recently. So that's what keeps me up at night.
Very, very challenging and I really, really appreciate the staff. They have their own personal challenges as well, but they've been really working hard.
Thanks. So it's almost 9:20. I would like to take a five-minute break. I don't know if we want to do the next portion because that's also Priscilla. What, what are people's thoughts?
That one would be very, very quick because it's related to what we just talked about.
Okay, let's go ahead with that then.
Okay, so I wanted to see if I can bring up the spreadsheet again. So I'm gonna share my screen. Oh, how do I do that? I'm not a host anymore, Kyle.
So I will give it back to you. And now you know how to switch it back again.
You have to promise to give it back.
You have to promise to give it back.
So share screen.
Yeah, try to share a screen and see if you can do it there. If, if not, I'll, I'll make you the host again.
Okay.
Okay, so I just made you, I'm changing the host over to you, Priscilla.
Okay. Okay, so it's, okay, let me share these. So this is a one-page disclosure. So in education code, when the state decided to, let me open this. Can you see this screen?
Yes.
So, okay, let me make it bigger. So this is a disclosure requirement that was added to the education code when the states tried to establish the rainy day fund. And so they wanted to know what are the components of fund balance for each of the school district? So anything in excess of 3%, they wanted to know what those are. So the total assigned and unassigned amount in our unrestricted general fund ending balance is about 9.7 million. And then our 3% is 3.1 million. And so they want an explanation why you have 6.5 and what are the reasons for keeping that in your reserve? So the details of that 6.5 is here. So that amount, the 35 and the 250, those are like potential obligations that the district may have with, with substitute leave, healthcare reform, that, you know, we're continually being audited. So there's an obligation for the district for that. We have a small set aside there. And then this 1 million here is our basic aid excess funding. So ideally, and we are not able to do that. So I think at second interim, we'll talk about what is the ideal situation if we're a basic aid district? We are not confirmed as the basic aid until after the June. You know, you have the property tax estimate P1 and then, which is August, and then you have the April, and then you have the June. So you get confirmed as a basic aid district in June. So the ideal situation is your excess taxes should not be touched until the end of the year. But unfortunately for us, we're already kind of using it because we are, we have operating deficit. So of that excess taxes, only 1 million is like left at the close of the 2021 fiscal year. So these 934,000 here is a carryover one grant. So in 1920, the, the state gave this one time. It's called a special preschool, special ed preschool intervention grant. It's about 1.1 million. And it was given in 1920, around March or April this year. So it, it was paid 50% early and then the second funding, the additional, the remaining 50% was paid around May. But we were getting at that time mixed messages that this will be taken back by the state. So we did not plan to spend it in 2021 because we don't know it's whether we have to repay that back. So that's why we put whatever is unspent there, so carryover just in case we have to return it to the state. The last 1.2 million here, this is the, it's called assigned for deficit spending here. I'm sorry for that, but that's really our set aside for, for the 4% me too calculation for CSEA and RCA. And then we have the, the board reserve 3%, which is exactly the same as the 3% minimum guarantee here. So those are the details of, of the components of the general fund ending balance. So we're required to just disclose the reasons for keeping those assigned amounts. Any question?
Any questions or comments from the board?
So I'm gonna close it down. Thank you.
Okay, so just as a reminder, we pulled 7.4 from the agenda. So we won't be discussing that tonight. I know we have people that are here waiting for 7.5. We're gonna take a quick five-minute break and then we will be back to talk about the Adelante Selvi name.
Priscilla, can you give me the host back, please?
Okay, so how do I do that?
Depends, at the bottom.
Okay.
Analysts. In the pop-up that comes up, panelists. And then hover, hover over my name and where you see the more with the down arrow.
Okay.
Click on the more with the down arrow and it's a make host.
Okay. Okay, I just did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Okay, we are at five minutes on the dot. Do we have people back with us? I see Dennis. I see Cecilia. Dr. Baker. Lisa, are you back with us?
Yeah, can you not see me? I'm here.
No, we can't see you.
Oh, how odd. I wonder what happened?
Well, it kind of looks like your camera's covered, but it's fine. You're there, so we're all set.
No, it's funny. I can see myself. So maybe I'll dial back in real quick. How weird. You can't see me.
No, you disappeared a while ago.
Really?
Yeah.
Why would that happen? Oh, my God. You know, just this virtual. Okay, well, I've been here the whole time. How very odd. Okay.
Okay, so we'll get started with 7.5, the public hearing for renaming 170 Selby Lane.
Right, so what you all have before you is, you know, the memo that was written in regard to.
Yeah.
Selby Lane.
And if everybody doesn't wear the material, they should all pass anyway. I just feel like.
Where is that? Where is that coming from?
I'm in a room by myself. But anyway, before you is the board memo in regard to naming the Selby Lane. Before we begin, I'd like to thank Mr. Cedar and his committee for going through this process again. I had originally thought we would have to go through the whole process, but in talking to our attorney with our county council, she said, no, you need to go back to the whole process because our board policy does not delineate anything different if a name that was selected and recommended was not approved. So thank you so much, Warren and your team, for moving this process forward again. As you see in the memo, it gives you a full timeline of everything that took place and the names that were selected to go out for vote. And then the percentages of the votes for the different names that were on the ballot. And then it comes down to my recommendation, which I'll be bringing to you at the next meeting that we do have. But at this time, we may want to entertain any questions and also hear from the public.
So we do have a handful of comment cards on this. We want to take those first? We want to have discussion? I know I'm looking to them, but they're just looking back at me.
Typically, typically, don't we hear from the community and then we have a discussion?
Yeah, we can do that. All right, then our first comment is from Michelle Smith. Just a reminder that public comments are limited to three minutes.
Okay, unmuted.
She's still muted. Michelle, can you unmute yourself? Oh, there you go. Go ahead. Michelle, are you there? Okay, well, I guess we'll come back to Michelle. The next comment is from Suzanne Ruiz Dunlap. Suzanne Dunlap, there we go. Hi Suzanne.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I just wanted to thank the naming committee for all their hard work they've done over these many, many months. I would like to thank Dr. Baker. I did read the recommendation in the notes of the agenda. And I noticed that he's honoring the voice of our community and recommending to the school board to accept the name Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School as our permanent name of our school site. I know the next step is for the board to vote on the recommendation. And I hope the board votes to permanently name, change the name of the school. Adelante Selby Spanish Immersion School is the perfect name to honor and continue the legacy of the Spanish immersion programs that were started and grew at both school sites. The vote is now in your hands. Please listen to our community. Thank you.
Thanks Suzanne. And then we have.
Michelle Smith is back now.
Okay. Hi, Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was having troubles hearing, and I don't know if you could hear me. So I just wanted to sort of voice my comments today. Not really sort of in favor or against the name recommendation, just more my frustration with this entire process. In that, you know, we are sort of back where we were three months ago. And I know that nobody really expected to be here, but the problem that I have with this whole process is number one, and this is something I directed to Dennis, is that we as a community already sort of gave our voice three months ago about this proposal. And I find it really disingenuous that the numbers are included in the agenda only because those numbers were not taken into account the first time around. So I don't know that it would, it's really valuable to even include this time around, especially if you're going to use them to, you know, it's like, oh, well, 70% voters for Adelante Selby. It's like, okay, well, that's, that's, but it's like, how are you going to take that account now, but not three months ago when the choice was different? I think that it, you know, I think the problem with the process altogether was that it was not formulated in a democratic way. The policy in itself is not very democratic, and I think that going forward, it should be altered so that more of the community's actual vote and voice matters and so that it can be counted. You know, and the thing is, is that two of the three choices from three months ago are still the top two choices now. And the only reason that Adelante isn't on there was because it was purposefully excluded from the choices by the committee. I'm just voicing the concern that, or the frustration rather, of so many parents and families that I have spoken to, that including, you know, the naming committee members, in that this process was drawn out just to end up right where we started. And I think that there is already like a mistrust between the community and the board from the last year's closures. This all kind of just brought it all back up and then just furthered that distrust in sort of the process and the board's ability to make decisions about these things. You know, it's, it's a crazy time, but I just, I wanted to, sort of like I said, I'm not here to say for or against anything because I think, and one of the other things that I had mentioned too, sort of Brad, was like, there were three choices that had sort of met the asks of every, everyone. There was the, you know, the old Spanish immersion name, the merge name, and a new name that was already put forward by the committee and by the community. And so I just feel like this process was drawn out unnecessarily. And that's just.
Michelle, it's three minutes, so. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Jonathan, sorry, Cantu?
Oh, he went up to the top. Okay, so we, this is the other issue we have that I need to promote him to a panelist.
Jonathan, oh, there you go. You're unmuted.
So.
So I was very disappointed when the board dismissed our recommendation of three names. These names were selected after extensive polling and reflected the desires of the community. Frankly, it seems sort of patronizing. Overwhelming choices of our community were rejected unanimously. And it also seems patronizing and problematic that we have an overwhelmingly small school that won our school. We lost our campus. We lost our school. And now it seems like we're on the verge of losing our name. I just think that, you know, if this was Roy Cloud School, the community wanted the Roy Cloud name. That wouldn't be a problem. But if it's Adelante, it's a Spanish immersion school.
I think we lost him.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we lost him. It sounded like the audio was, it was not good on my end. I couldn't hear much of what he said. Chris Rozon, Rozon, tell me how to say your last name, Chris.
Hi, it's just Rozon.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Going through. Yeah, I think Michelle and Kyle kind of spoke for the whole community. And I'll, you know, just kind of reiterate their, or affirm their position that we kind of felt that there was a little bit of a next doorification of the process, where just the loudest voices at the end of the process kind of took, took control over, over the whole process after much discussion and much communication. So anyways, I just kind of wanted to make sure that there was a voice out there, letting you know that the community of Adelante and Selby is very, very attached to that, that identity as a joint new entity. And you know, Adelante Selby was the choice of the community, and we wanted to make sure that you guys knew that.
Okay, thanks.
And thank you, and thank you for your hard work, because we know it's not easy.
Thanks. Devin Mulaney?
There's two.
I know there's two of you, Devin. Which, which one should we bring up?
I did the top one. Okay, so that one's still muted. Try the other one. Oh, there we go. So also promote to panelist.
Hi, Devin, you're on mute. So there you go. You're unmuted.
Sorry about that. So my point is, thank you for the time, but the naming thing has gone on for quite a while. And it just seems like there are a lot of other things that are more important right now as far as the district figuring out managing what we're going to do in the upcoming school year and everything else. It's just, you guys have been going through the process, everybody else is going through the process. Appreciate the patience and stuff. Just would love it to be wrapped up. In addition, the peninsula named aspects, and unfortunately, I didn't even check, double check to see if those are still on the list. Yeah, I'm scrolling down right now. There we are. Mid Peninsula. Just so you know, there's also another school in another district close by Peninsula that's a continuation school. And to have that kind of close, maybe mistaken identity would be great to avoid. Now that there are bad group of students or bad school, it's just we're a very different organization. Those are my two cents. Thank you guys for the time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Devin. Okay, that's the end of our comment cards. So if the board wants to have a discussion. I can't find everybody. I see Dennis, Maria.
Lisa's blacked out. All you can see is her name.
Cecilia, okay.
So I, I mean, I'd be happy to speak. I'm sorry you can't see me. I don't know what's going on. I even tried to get my 22-year-old to help me out. Usually they can figure it out for me, but, but you guys can hear me okay? Okay, so.
Yeah, we can.
Talk. So I'm really glad, actually, the speaker spoke tonight because it gives us an opportunity to maybe talk a little bit about how we got here. And I completely agree with you that we have a lot of big decisions to make. I'm hoping that we can help make this decision sooner than later. And just as a reminder, when this first came to us, there was the recommendation of the Adelante Selby name. However, prior to the meeting, we were getting bombarded with emails and phone calls. And then at the meeting, there was a lot of people still vying for the name Adelante or a different name and really mad that we were not choosing the name Adelante. And I know in the conversations that we had at that initial board meeting, you know, we also heard from some Selby families who felt very hurt by just the choosing of the Adelante name. And if you looked at the vote at the time, you know, it was about two-thirds Adelante and about a third Adelante Selby or combination of difference, but that also was proportional to the students who had come together. And I think ultimately, what I heard that night, and certainly what I felt as a board member, that my goal with the name was something that would help unite the two communities who would come together. So they would be one unified school community moving forward, and also a name that excited people. And I think at the meeting where the board unanimously voted against Adelante Selby, what we heard that night and leading up to the meeting through the emails and phone calls we were getting, we were hearing that people were not happy with the name Adelante Selby. I think what we heard that night from board members, we would have been happy with Adelante Selby. In fact, that's how I thought it was going to go. But it seemed like there was a lot of unhappiness with that name and that it was not going to be unifying. It was not going to be exciting for the, the school community. So that is why we sent it back to the school site to come up with another name. Frankly, I'm happy that Adelante Selby came to the top. Certainly, that's something I can get behind. I think it unifies the community. It honors both communities coming together. So I do think it was useful for us to see the vote, to see that it does, that name does have a lot of support, which is great. So I guess for me personally, I hope that explains a little bit to those in the audience who are listening as to how we got here. That I think we were trying to honor a democratic process while we were following our policy. And you know, one of the things as board members is we do not always go with the majority vote. You do take into consideration the minority opinion. And in this case, the reason we did not choose Adelante originally, at least for me personally, and what I heard that night as board members, is that we were also trying to honor the Selby families who were saying that they were very hurt by that name only, and that it felt very alienating to them and overtaking, kind of dominating of them. So that's why we did not choose that name. So sometimes we do not go with the majority vote. So although it's useful to see the vote, and we acknowledge that as part of the decision-making, we also look at the bigger picture. So for me personally, I was very happy to see at the end, you know, end of this process, and I realized it was frustrating for the community to have to go through it again, particularly during COVID and all of that. But I think it just reinforces the unity around the name Adelante Selby, which makes me feel really good about agreeing that that's the right name for the school at this time. So thank you, Dr. Baker, and Warren Cedar, the principal, and the whole committee. I really appreciate what you did. I know you were not happy to have to go back to the board, drawing board. But I hope that explains a little bit about what happened and how we got here. And again, thank you for all your hard work, and I'm happy that we're able to come up with a unifying name. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'll go. So I'm in my 17th year, and we've made, it seems like every year we have really hard decisions and we agonize and have problems. But this is really the only decision back when we made it where I personally feel like I did not, I came away feeling like I had let people down. And so first, I want to thank the people that came and talked. I want to thank the committee for going back. And I had talked to Warren and Dr. Baker and said, you know, I really, you know, I don't want to. And I had talked to Warren and Dr. Baker and said, you know, I really, you know, I don't want to kind of overstep my bounds, but I'd really like to see the name come back. And so I'd just like to thank the committee for, for doing that. And I am totally supportive of this. And again, I'm really sorry that, um, I didn't, um, figure it out sooner.
Uh, Maria or Cecilia, would you like to speak?
I'll go. Um, so I just want to thank everybody for, uh, going back and working so hard on this. As Dennis said, it, uh, it's hard for people to come together, especially with all the changes. So I appreciate all the hard work that everyone has, um, put into this. I think for me, the other thing, um, besides all the items that Elisa listed previously was, uh, when Cecilia spoke about the translation of the meaning of the names. And, um, again, trying to bring the community together is what, uh, is important to me in making sure that the students feel welcome. And, um, that it's everyone's school, not just one group. So thank you, everybody, for all your hard work.
So I can go or Cecilia, if you wanted to say something? No, I can't tell. Okay. So I think I, I have kind of different feelings than has been expressed, um, by the other board members. I have heard the community members, I've seen it on social media, that the board was swayed by a handful of people who came out that night to complain about the name Adelante. And I will tell you, that's not the case for me. I had been getting messages privately and emails, um, before that meeting. And a number of emails afterwards from the former Selby community thanking me because they did not find that to be a unifying name. I will caution the community that although I keep hearing that Adelante Selby is unifying, the former Selby community does not necessarily feel that way. And does not necessarily feel like they have been included. What I'm hearing from them privately, and they're afraid to say it publicly, is that they feel like they're trying, that Adelante is trying to absorb them. Um, and I, I have to be a voice for the minority in this case that, um, uh, what I saw in the votes that went forward was, you know, the votes for Adelante and Adelante Selby were the size of the Adelante community. You know, did the Selby community actually vote for that? I don't know. And I feel like this is a really missed opportunity. Um, i- if you think forward, you know, 10, 20 years from now, um, what does the name Adelante Selby mean to that community? We had an opportunity to name the school after a Puerto Rican-born woman that was, you know, American civil rights activist that led school reform. But instead we want to keep the name of an affluent white San Francisco mayor. It just doesn't make sense to me. I hear all of you. I understand that you want to keep, um, your history or your culture. But I was really hoping that we could do better, um, the second time around. So that's where I'm at. Cecilia didn't seem to want to speak, so Dr. Baker, I don't know if you want to say more?
So what I will do is this will come back. It will come back on the 24th. And at that meeting, um, I'll come back with the recommendation. The recommendation is there. I do not have an intention to change the recommendation. So, um, we'll come back and we'll get a vote on the 24th.
Okay, so this won't come back on the, the next week, right?
Well, next week is a special meeting and what, we could talk about that. I can put it on a special meeting.
No, I don't think we need to. Um, I was just, just double checking, especially for those in the audience who would like to be here.
Right. So, you know, it's a special meeting next week for a couple of reasons. And, um, like I say, if, if, if it's the board's desire to bring it back on next week, I can do that.
You know, the only thing I might say to bring it back sooner than later is so the community can move forward. I know that, you know, there was some excitement around, you know, getting ready for the next school year. So I don't know if they want to wait two weeks versus one week. Maybe you can ask, uh, Principal Seater for his recommendation. I think it could go on either depending upon what they would prefer.
Okay, I can do that. I can check with Warren. If Warren said.
If that's okay with you, Janet, because I know you work with Dr. Baker on the agenda.
Um, so trying to remember now what we've talked about for next week, but it might be best to just keep it on the 24th like it was planned.
That's fine.
I mean, Dr. Baker, it's up to you. I don't, I don't care.
Warren just said next week would be perfect. So, um, I'll, I'll probably put it on next week and so we'll move it forward. Okay. It won't be a big discussion. It'll be an action item, so we can just move forward. All right?
Great. Thank you. Thanks everyone for hanging in there. I know, I think this is probably what a lot of you were here for, maybe the COVID discussion coming up also. Um, we are now on the, um, item eight, the bond program consent items, which also includes items nine point one, two, three, and four.
So move.
So move. Oh, I'll second it.
Dennis and Elisa, can we have a roll call vote, please?
To McBride?
Aye.
Cassie Marcus?
Aye.
Cidius Loco?
Aye.
President Markable?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Item 10.1, discussion on COVID-19.
Okay, as you all know, we have been working diligently on the reopening of our school district, uh, for the fall. And, uh, at the last board meeting, Liz Wolf gave an overview of the, uh, committee work. There's a steering committee. Now the steering committee has several subcommittees. We have added to those subcommittees. We do have staff members, we have teachers, we have administrators, and we do have community members. Because their, uh, the subcommittees have been quite, it grown, uh, I'm going to read the subcommittees to you that came from the Ed Services section. So there's a technology, uh, subcommittee, which is, uh, the team leader is Kyle Brumbach, who is our own, uh, technology director. For childcare, we have Baty Ortiz. And Baty Ortiz, you, you know well, who is our community school coordinator, who works very hard in making sure that we have our after-school programs, um, any other type of childcare facilities that are at our school sites. She is joined not only by staff members, but she's joined by community members, uh, in the community that work with the after-school programs and childcare. We also have, um, several subcommittees within the realm of programs. And so for the distance learning, we have one of our, um, principals Jude Noyes and a vice principal, Chandra Leonardo from Kennedy. And Jude is from Clifford and they are the team leaders for that subcommittee. And then for our stable cohorts, and that's for our children, uh, that are coming to school in, in a cohort manner as directed right now. Well, will be directed hopefully in a few weeks by the county health orders. Because right now they're in bubbles. And bubbles, remember, no longer exist. It's going to go to stable cohorts. And it's, uh, Dr. Montez and Tina Mercer, who is the, um, principal at Roosevelt as the team leads. And then there is, um, definitely a need to have a subcommittee looking at bilingual education slash immersion. Because if you saw previously, there were questions about our, our bilingual program and our immersion program. So Lupe Guzman, who's the VP at Hoover, and Lupe Torres, who is the incoming principal at Garfield, will be leading, uh, that, uh, committee. And then of course, there's special education. Special education is, uh, one of our programs in which is quite large in this district. And so there have been, uh, questions about special ed. What is that going to look like? How are we going to handle special ed? And Dr. Belina, who is the director of special education, will lead that team. We also have social emotional learning. And that one is being led by Antonio Perez, who is also our director of student services. And then we have an equity subcommittee. And the equity subcommittee is to really, um, look at the issues of, for example, our most vulnerable students, who, uh, there's been this, this learning loss during these months. How can we do something a bit different to really meet the needs of that learning loss? And what will that look like? And then also looking at our ELL students, our, our, our students who need additional assistance in that arena. So to making sure that we're focusing on those pieces. That's not, and then we also have the facilities, uh, and the health and wellness. And it's kind of a, a larger group broken up into two. And that's led by, uh, Michelle Griffith and Sarah Shackle. And with the equity, uh, subcommittee, it's Ana Herrera, who is the, um, principal at TAF. And Liz Wolf, who will be coming in, uh, and working with us full-time next year, who will be heading that committee. I also invited, uh, each of you board members to partake in a committee if you so desire. I believe Janet is on special ed, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct.
And Dennis, you're on, um, H, no, facilities. And Maria is on HR. And then we go to, uh, Elisa. Did you decide which one you were going to be on, like the childcare? Or have you made that decision yet?
Um, yes, I wasn't sure if I, it would be better for me to be on childcare or kind of at large and looking at all the different groups. However, I can be most useful, I think, is what I wanted to, because I know in Ed Services, there's a number of places where, you know, there's partnerships out there and stuff. But, you know, wherever you want me, John, I'm happy to help serve.
I'll, I'll talk to Liz about that one then, okay? And Cecilia, you're back to work full-time. You're back to work full-time. I know Sequoia's, um, started all staff back at the district office.
Sorry, I just can jump in real quick. I, and Liz can answer this, but I'm pretty sure the childcare subcommittee is Patti and, and the, um, partners primarily. I don't think there's, um, other groups on there. I'm seeing Wendy nodding her head and.
Right.
Yes, you're correct.
There are partners on that committee, on the childcare committee. And so as I was, as I was saying to Cecilia, now that Sequoia is back, and I know all the district people are there, um, you're welcome to, if you can, uh, zoom in or zoom out of these meetings. They're, they're, they are during the day. They are during the day. I, I gave you, um, last week, we met the times and so forth. So it, it's entirely up to you. Or we'll just, or we can also send you the, the notes, the notes of the meetings for all the subcommittees. So you can have that. Whatever you prefer.
I think the notes will be fine because unfortunately, um, again, due to me being back at work, um, it's just probably going to be really hard for me to try to make that time. And, you know, we're getting ready for the next school year as well, so.
Right. Okay, perfect. That's great.
So, Dr. Baker, I was, um, riding really fast and I, I couldn't keep up. So could you, um, send out?
I will send this out. I will send this out to everybody so you have it. Okay? And then I can also put the people's names that are underneath it. I just gave the team leaders, I can give the participants. Okay? So this is in motion. We also, you know, put into place, um, a parent survey. And Wendy's going to talk about this in a few moments. But before that, as you know, uh, there is input that is needed. And that's why the parent survey went out again. And when I checked before the board meeting, there was 2,070 responses. I think there's more now. But at that time, there were 2,070 responses. We are having, uh, our office staff and others, uh, assist us in contacting parents who have not, um, responded yet. This evening, Sequoia High School District is presenting what they believe their plan will be. And, um, I know their plan is also looking at a hybrid model. And, um, so they also took information from parents. What I want to do, and Janet and I had spoken about this earlier, is because as we come forward with a COVID-19, and we talk about it at every board meeting. And then on the 24th, you'll see a more, a plan that's more gelled. And then the following month, even more so. What I would like to do is to, um, present to the board the opportunity to allow parents, uh, 48 hours before the board meeting, to send us any type of questions on the COVID-19 reentry. What Jorge has done, and I know he's, he's on the call, he has created a webpage that talks about reopening. And in that webpage, we're going to put a lot of information along with questions and the responses to those questions so that the community can see them. I would like to start this process next week because for the next few weeks, there is going to be a lot of work being done with the subcommittees. A lot of work that, um, will be on that webpage. And we would like to have responses or questions back from parents that we could look at 48 hours before the board meeting. And we can determine, yes, we can respond to these questions right then and there. Or we also, um, uh, thought of doing a webinar after a group of sessions had come available to, um, to, uh, staff, board members, and myself. And then in these webinars that we would have, it would be outside of a board meeting. It would be myself, possibly the board president, uh, Liz Wolf, or other team members that will go through the questions and respond to them. It would give us the opportunity to have the, uh, advantage of telling the community, here's this webinar. These are the questions that are, were, we want to address according to the subcommittees of our reopening plan. Please partake. And we will answer the question at the webinar and then take further information if they feel that it's not enough. But I wanted to get the board's, um, take on that before I even start venturing in that direction. Because I know there's a lot of concern in regard to, um, the whole piece about learning loss. What are we going to do for our students who are most, um, highly, those students who are most vulnerable that had learning loss? What are we going to do differently? What's going to happen with special ed? I know there are parents that just, in the, oh, a few emails I received, said you just need to open up schools back up like they were. And to those parents, I would love to do that. I would, we all would love to do that. But the county order is not going to allow that to fly. And remember, as one parent told me, these are recommendations that we're getting from the state, recommendations we're getting from the county office of ed. They are recommendations, but please understand the county department of health supersedes all of those recommendations. So, um, I'd love to start. I'd love us all to come back and have a, just start out like we always do. But that's not going to happen with the six, the six feet that we have to distance, the mask wearing that has to occur. Teachers probably going to have to wear, you know, the face shields and the mask and, and, and whatever else is needed. And then the, making sure that you come back to school in those stable cohorts. So I want to make sure that there is enough information going out to the community, community and enough coming back in before that final, this is it, on July 15th. What we're doing, that's four weeks before school opens August 9th. This is what we're doing. Not unless the county health department pivots and says, no, you're not doing that. You're all doing distance learning, which could be a possibility if the, um, COVID increases throughout the county. If we have more positive results of people with COVID. And I think, uh, Janet and I were talking this morning, I know on Monday, it had increased to 170 people that have tested positively for it. And Janet said it's been increasing since then, so. So we just need to be, we need to be prepared. We need to be prepared. And I want us as prepared as best we can. So, um, anything that, any input that you can give to me would be greatly appreciated before I turn it to Wendy for the, the parents today. before I turn it to Wendy for the, the parents survey, turn over to her for that.
Yes, go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, so I had a question. What's your thinking in not having board members be able to listen in? Like, you know, maybe be muted or, you know, like agendize it, but not necessarily participate?
That, that's a possibility. The one, when I have two board members with me that can respond. And if there's more than two, remember, we just need to identify who the two are, because that's according to the Brown Act.
Right, or you could agendize it.
I can agendize it, right. I can do one or the other.
Yeah, again, again, I'm not, I am fine being mute. I, I just think there's value to hear every, all the opinions and perspectives.
Others?
Yeah, I, I like the idea of the webinar, especially for the Spanish-speaking community that has a lot of questions and they're, they have a lot of misinformation and have a lot of needs. Excuse me, and like Dennis said, I don't need to answer the questions. I think most of the questions are probably for staff. So I would like to listen in if you, if we can't be present at that time, maybe you can provide us with a copy of the recording. But I do think the webinar would be very valuable.
And when we are doing it in Spanish, it will be, when we do, when we have the webinar for our Spanish-speaking community, it will totally be, the webinar will be in Spanish. That's all, it will be in Spanish. Any others?
Yeah, so can you hear me?
Yes.
No.
Okay, can you see me yet? No.
No.
I don't know. I don't know what happened, I really don't. Okay, so anyway, John, I think that sounds like a great idea. I was kind of curious, I, I think I wasn't, you said 48 hours before the board meeting or the plan? I guess, actually, before you answer that, I, I actually, I like the idea of the webinar. I think that's fine. And I, again, I don't need to be a speaking member, but it might be good just to agendize it like it was a study session kind of thing. That way, we make sure we're not violating the Brown Act if the rest of us are listening in and that sort of thing. But it could be more like a study session idea, like it's not a formal meeting where we have all the oral communication and all that. So, but, but, but when were you thinking of doing this, the timing?
So, uh, the timing is, well, we have, our next board meeting is on the 17th, right? So I'm hoping that for the next board meeting, and I have, Jorge is listening to this. And so I will have him put out information to parents that I would like to have questions 48 hours prior to the 17th. Those questions, though, would most likely be answered, probably, I'd have a webinar on the 18th and, and possibly one on the 19th, two webinars back to back. Because I'd want to do one in Spanish and I also want to do one in English. And I would do the same thing for the following week. So I need to talk to staff about this to make sure that I'm not rushing this. Because I want to get as, I want to make sure that the communication is going in both directions. And this is one way where I feel it could. So I know a neighboring district did this, but didn't have, doesn't have a large enough, doesn't have a large district like ours, and it worked quite well. So I would like to definitely start on the 17th with the 48 hours before the 17th with questions. There may be some questions when we get to COVID-19 on the 17th that we can answer and we can take them right away. But I would still like to at least hold the first webinar, possibly on the 18th, and then the three on our Spanish-speaking parents, also hold one for them the following day on the 19th, or vice versa, one way or the other. What do you think, Alisa?
Yeah, so then maybe it doesn't need to be agendized if it's, I mean, I guess it's already going to be on the 17th. So that's the board meeting, right?
The one, the ones that would need to be agendized, if you have, say we couldn't get, it all depends, the questions that are coming in, the committees, it all depends on the question and for what portion of the plan are they looking at? Are they looking at that whole piece that deals with stable cohort? What does that really, our stable cohort at this time, when we brought it to, when Liz explained it la, and last week, was we had a stable cohort and the cohort was coming. Remember, we thought of, at that time, it was like a, a Monday, whatever, a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, or whatever. But since we've had the conversations with the subcommittees, they thought it's best to go Monday, Tuesday, no school on Wednesday for the, the deep cleaning, and then start up Thursday, Friday with the next cohort. So that's a cohort that everybody's worried about. They're also worried about, what if I don't want cohort? Can I still have the distance learning? And that was something that we said, yes. But as we get in, more into the survey of what parents are thinking, there's the other big piece about childcare, which I looked at briefly, just at some of the, the responses that came back from this last survey that went out last week. Parents are really concerned about childcare. They say they have to go back to work. Who is going, if you're going to do the Monday, Tuesday, there's no school on Wednesday. My kid doesn't come back until the following Monday because I'm in cohort A. What happens if I have to be at work versus no childcare? So we really have to explain what services are out there that can help support us. And hopefully, maybe, maybe the restrictions from the county health department will change a bit. Because they have changed right now for the summer and the park and rec programs. Remember, now they're, they're that cohort, they call them that cohort bubble. It used to have to stay together for four weeks. They changed it now to every three weeks. So maybe they'll start lessening up on some of that, I don't know. But we really need to voice where we are with it and where parents are with it also. Does that help? So with, think about it for a few minutes. Wendy, why don't you go into, I'm going to segue into the survey.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody, nice to see you. So this is the second parent survey that was distributed. The last one was on May 18th. And since then, of course, we were able to narrow down and have more specific questions. And while it's not perfect, it was a really good sort of dipstick in time about what people were thinking. So John, I was actually able to pay, to collect a little bit more specific data since we spoke earlier. We actually have 55% of our families that have responded. And so we have about 5,300 families in our district. There were two surveys that went out. One was a survey in Spanish, same questions, of course. One was a survey in Spanish. There were 932 respondents at 5 o'clock tonight. And 2,082 in English. And so I'm going to go over each of the surveys separately. And I'll be more than happy to email this data to you tomorrow. But I will be verbally saying it right now, so it will be, it might be a little tough to follow, but I'm going to go through each one of them. So as you recall, the, there were various items that were asked on the survey. One was, one of the choices was the type of learning environment. We had three options. Option one, which was a full distance learning option. Option two, a hybrid, which means that students are on campus part of the time and distance learning part of the time, as John just mentioned. And then option three was the ability for parents to choose full distance learning or a hybrid model. And that was one section. The other section was childcare. The other was technology needs and supplies they had at home and, and internet capabilities. And then last was their concerns regarding cleanliness and health and wellness of their child. And so tonight, I'm going to review just the highlights of the survey. It just closed this afternoon, so I'll, I'll be going back and looking at it with more detail. We also, as John mentioned, are asking office staff to call families that did not respond because while 55% is pretty good, we'd like a higher number. So I'll start with the Spanish survey. For the options, it was a one to five Likert scale. And for option one, 34% was in favor of option one, which was the full distance learning option. 46 were in favor, 46% of option two, and 40% of option three. And so option two, once again, is the hybrid model, which seemed more favorable at this moment in time. In regards to childcare, out of the 932 respondents, 539, which is 57% of those that, of all respondents, noted that they needed some sort of childcare. So 32% needed childcare during distance learning times of the week. And 62% were very concerned about after-school care. But a very small percentage of those needed before school care. In regards to technology, 85% of families that responded in the Spanish survey out of 932 respondents, 85% stated they had reliable internet at home in one way or another. And then there was a variety of responses regarding the wellness and return, and the cleanliness. Most concerning areas were the social distancing. So the ability to have students social distance and the cleaning that would happen in between students being on campus. So those were the top two. Switching over to the English survey, there were 2,082 respondents. And with that, option one, which is full distance learning, there was a resounding 66% no. So the other errors, remember, it was a Likert scale. So 66% of families said no to full distance learning. Option two, 68% were in favor of option two, which is the hybrid on campus and distance learning. And 52% were in favor of option three, which is the parent's choice to choose a full distance learning pathway or a hybrid. So for the English survey, option two, and for the Spanish survey, option two was, was highlighted as, as more favorable than other options. And for the English survey, of the 2,082 people that responded, 60% of families who answered the survey noted they needed childcare after school and during distance learning time. It was 47% during the distance learning school hours. So those days in which their children might be at home, but not, not on a hybrid day, perhaps. And 50% stated they needed it after school. On the English survey, 96% of families stated that they have reliable internet. And then, of course, it was actually very similar topics regarding the health and cleaning in terms of social distancing and the cleanliness factor and mask wearing, whether kids would keep their masks on and would we be able to monitor that properly. So those were the highlights of the survey that just went out. Once again, we might have higher numbers as the week progresses, as the office staff is able to call home and, and ask people to continue with completing the survey. So that's the data I have tonight.
So with the data that you have tonight, that I'm sure poses several questions for parents in regard to just what you said. So if we could, I, I just, Liz was texting me as, as you were speaking. We could actually have one webinar. She, she said we could plan one webinar with our families on, one on Thursday, which is the 18th, and one on Friday, which is the 19th. So I would ask parents to give us questions within, you know, have Jorge put this into one, one of my messages going out that we would like to receive questions from you in regard to concerns and then questions regarding the reopening of schools and the work that is being done within these subcommittees. And I'll list the subcommittees that we're working on right now. Because those are the committees that are really going to help us make our program strong. I understand that also teachers have been sending us emails in regard to, especially kindergarten and TK, that there should be possibly an AM and a PM schedule. I don't think that is going to work because of the cleaning, the cleaning piece. If I could make it work, I would do it, but I don't think so. I have a call into some other colleagues about their TKs and Ks to see how they are working with that. But I'm almost positive that the order is going to say that after that group leaves, you really need to get in there and start cleaning right then and there. So I, I totally understand where the kindergarten teachers are coming from. I, I totally get it. I don't think we're going to be able to go in that direction. I'm not going to say, no, not at all, but I just don't think so until I get further information. I think the cleaning is going to take the upper hand on what has to be done as soon as the students leave, right as soon. So if I have, if you're okay with me moving forward with this, I'd like to prepare for the first webinar on the 18th and the second one on the 19th, talking to Liz again, and then talking to all the subcommittee leaders, depending on the types of questions that come in.
So I'm sorry, what, you said the 18th and 19th in the evening, or?
It would most likely be, it would probably be like a 6 o'clock, starting at 6 o'clock. And we, we'd have it for two hours.
So on, on Friday?
Yeah, on, there's an 18th and the 19th, they're Friday.
Will spend their Friday evening with us? So does the board have anything to add to that? Or is it, can Dr. Baker go forward with that?
So can I just ask a clarifying question? When you talk about the webinar, you're going to ask the parents to send the questions ahead of time. And then during that time, you're going to answer those questions? Or is it going to be a two-hour period where perhaps other parents will be able to ask additional questions? Or are you just going to focus on answering the questions that were asked the 48 hours prior to the webinar?
I would like to answer the questions that were asked 48 hours prior to the webinar. If there is a dining meeting for a person to ask a question, we'll see who raises their hand, because this is not a board meeting, it's not a board meeting. We'll see who raises their hand, and if we can answer the question quickly, we'll answer. If not, we'll have to wait till the next time. And then, and then the idea is also with these questions and the responses, is to put them on the webpage, is to put them on the webpage. Remember when, I'm sure you all remember last year. Well, we had all those emails and everything. So Jorge did a really great webpage that I'll have him share with each of you tomorrow. And it's in English and in Spanish. And that's where all the questions and the answers will go to. And anything that comes up that we feel that's important that parents need to know, they go directly there, and that's where it is. And we'll constantly remind them. All right, so we'll move.
So, so John, I'll just say, you know, hearing more about it, I think it's fine if it's not agendized as long as it's a webinar where if we want to listen in, we can, or if it's recorded, we could hear it afterwards. Because like we said, I think it'll just be useful for us to hear the information as well. But yeah, it doesn't need to be a board meeting.
Okay.
At least in my opinion. I don't know what the other board members think.
The rest of you think. Because two can be with us and talk. The others can, you know, always just listen. All right, thumbs up.
All right, you got thumbs up.
Okay, I'll move forward with it then, all right. So that was my COVID-19 piece.
All right, so we will move along to consent items. And just for the board, I realized that the hard copy agenda that you have has an 11.14 on it, but that was actually Ray Eliana pulled before it was posted on Friday. So we are, consent items are 11.1 through 11.13. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Lisa?
Maria was the second.
Maria, okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez?
Aye.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, twelve point one, recommendation for approval of facilities use between R C S D and Rocketship.
Yes, it's a facilities and use agreement between Rocketship and ourselves. And they are going to be, you know, using some of the HAWS classrooms. It is a two-year agreement. The two-year agreement was made because we do not know, by we, the district office, where we're going to be if we're going to have to. Maybe the third year. So that's why it's only two, it's a two-year agreement. They will, there is a limitation on the number of Redwood City School District children that they will be accepting during that period of time. And that is in the memo. And we both agree to those terms. You see that Rocketship has agreed to limit the total A D D A each year to three eighteen and three twenty-three. Are there any questions in regard to this? They're using twelve classrooms, the administration and a research room. And then, of course, a shared use of the multi-use room, kitchen, storage, playground space, and so forth, parking.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Hi, did we raise the student head count? Because I thought we were at like two eighty in discussions.
No, we're not at two eighty. We're actually at.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Dennis and Maria, give a roll call vote, please.
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez?
Aye.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Item twelve point two, adoption of resolution twenty-nine, the education protection account for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty-one.
So this is the two hundred dollars per A D A that is estimated to be received by the district for twenty twenty-one. And so this is just a compliance of the California constitutional requirement to determine the spending plan for that E P, education protection account allocation. And it has to be done at a public meeting. So the expenditures for this one point three estimated amount will be utilized exclusively for salaries and benefits for classroom teachers.
Any questions?
I'm just curious how you get the signatures. Eliana, do you know the answer?
Are you talking about our signatures?
Yeah.
I have the word format of the resolutions, and I have your electronic signature, so I can include that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was Alisa.
That was Maria.
Maria, sorry. Was it?
I'm just watching the box.
I think, oh, I think I said the same thing, but I'm happy to second it, that's fine.
Okay, so we have Maria and Alisa. Cecilia, you can get the next one. Roll call vote?
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez?
Aye.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Twelve point three, adoption of resolution thirty, year-end budget transfer.
So this, again, is a resolution that's required by the County Office of Education. So it would just help facilitate the closing of the two thousand nineteen twenty books so that if we, if they are processing in expenditures where there is no budget in a specific category, that they can move some of the budget in other expenditure categories just to allow the processing of the transaction.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Dennis, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Maria, a roll call vote?
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez? Jaci Marquez?
Cecilia, are you here? You're on mute.
Looks like she dropped off.
I see her name.
Oh, I don't, oh, yeah, she's at the bottom, you're right.
But she's muted.
Yeah, okay, well, we can go to the next.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Lawson connected. Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye, Cecilia, you're back.
Okay, let's see. Twelve point four, adoption of resolution thirty-one, temporary inter-fund transfer.
So this is the resolution that I mentioned that we may or may not, depending on whether. I'm echoing. So if we are going to get all our property taxes in June or not, so we may or may not need the resolution, but we just need to have it stand by to make sure that we have a positive cash balance in all our funds by June thirty, twenty twenty.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria? Cecilia? Vote, please.
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez?
Aye.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. And our final action item is twelve point five, twenty twenty twenty-one statement of reasons of excess reserves.
That's actually not correct. If you, if you go, I mean, I know the agenda says that, but if you go online, it's actually Newzella, Newzella. If you actually pull up the document online, it's the contract for Newzella.
Okay.
So I don't know which it should be, but.
Where, do we have, oh.
I'm looking for Newzella, right? Because that's seventy-nine thousand dollars, yeah.
Right.
And it's coming.
So I think we just need to go correct the agenda. It's funny, the online agenda is correct, it's the hard copy.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the hard copy, sorry.
I've gone for that. It's the purchase of the Newzella.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, it's the whole district.
Right.
It's seventy-nine thousand, Janet, if you want to know.
Yeah, thank you. So is, if there's no questions, is there a motion?
I'll move it. This is very exciting. I love Newzella, I think it's such a great educational tool.
Yeah, I love it too. So a motion by Alisa?
Second.
Dennis got it.
First. And a vote, please.
Jaci McBride?
Aye.
Jaci Marquez?
Aye.
Jaci Diaz-Solcom?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to board and superintendent reports. Who would like to go first? Don't make me call on you.
I'll go, Janet.
Thanks, Maria.
Let's see, what did I do? Saw lots of wonderful, I guess, online graduations. They were very good. I do miss that, you know, graduation celebration in person, but the ones that I saw were very, very nice, well put together. Let's see here. Dennis and I had the budget meeting. I also attended the H R subcommittee for the reopening plan. And then Dennis and I attended the Innovate meeting with the parents, which I must say I was a little disappointed because after meeting with them time after time, it's still scripted and we just, it wasn't what I was expecting. Remember, they're looking for you, Janet. And that's all I have.
They are.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Cecilia?
I don't have anything other than, just like Maria, I did watch some of the graduations. And again, very well put together, some pretty neat ideas from some of the principals. And so I was really thrilled that although we're in this time of COVID, you know, they still are very energetic and so enthusiastic. And again, you know, some of the students that were actually part of the videos. So that's it for me as part of a board report.
Thanks, how about Alisa?
All right. Yeah, so I too watched some of the promotion ceremonies, fifth grade and eighth grade. And, you know, one of the pluses was that they were able to have relatives from all over the place watch their graduation or their promotion ceremony, which would not have happened otherwise because a lot of people do not live close enough to attend those. So that was sort of one plus, I thought. It was kind of fun that in some of them, you could see the relatives. Most of them, you know, were not necessarily set up that way. But, so anyway, I thought they were well done. I hope that parents and students felt good about them, family members did, as good as we can in this time. And then Cecilia and I also met with the Innovate parents. I think we probably already mentioned that at the last meeting. And I do think, you know, one of the things that's interesting about that is you do have KIP and Rocketship parents who are part of Innovate, who have a lot of questions that I think they need to be asking their administrators and their board of directors. So I think there's still some confusion as to who's responsible for day-to-day activities and programming and that sort of thing at their school site. So I know that Cecilia and I tried to let them know once again that they should be talking to their own administrators and board members about that. And then, yeah, we did have some questions and things. It sounds like Maria and Dennis, you had a similar experience. I did go to a C F B A Climate Task Force meeting virtually. And I'm one of, I don't know, I think there's maybe about ten school board members and two student reps that are on the task force. And we gave, we brainstormed quite a bit in terms of what resources could be helpful to districts as we think about climate. There was a lot around cost savings and infrastructure around clean energy and energy savings that could be helpful. And C F B A will be putting together a client, some draft language around climate resolutions and policies that we can adopt. So we'll look forward to that coming out in the future. And then, let's see, we had an L cap meeting that we attended that we already talked about tonight. And that's it.
Great, thanks. Dennis?
Thank you. Before I start, I would like to thank Gonzalo and Itzel for hanging in so late every night. Because usually, there's a certain point where they can leave, but they've been here late with us all the time, so just thank you. So I don't know if this was before the last time we reported or not, but we had the budget presentation by capital advisors. And it's obviously a little outdated because the legislature has now said we're not going to do what the governor wants. Wendy and I visited the four food sites. And Wendy had her daughter Megan, and she had her car totally tricked out with banners, which is really cool. Mine were just sheets of paper that I had typed on, but hers were really creative. And then I got to do a really fun, really cool thing, and that was Mary Con's special day class. She arranged to have a car parade for three of her students that were graduating, Esteban, Yoselin, and Raquel. And they had three bus drivers that had transported the students all the years. They had Romero, they had Julie, instructional aides. They had a Redwood City fire truck. They were supposed to have a Redwood City police car, but they got called away, and myself. And it was just so cool to see, you know, all the parents and relatives outside with the kids and the big smiles on the kids' faces, which is really an uplifting thing. I watched probably like five graduations. I, what I took away is we always get stacked up or, you know, we have like two or three at the same times, we can't go. So it'd be nice if we could figure out a way when we go back to live to videotape it so we can come back and watch it because they're just really special and cool. And then, big shout out to Don Diaz for all his work on the capacity plan. I mean, he's busy as can be on the construction, but he was really helpful. And then we had our first, first meeting I attended of the facilities and wellness team. And boy, the things you learn and the complexity of things that, like, like a twenty-passenger school bus for special ed can only have one wheelchair and like three kids. And an eighty-passenger bus can only have like fourteen kids. So there's just a lot of logistics things, and that's it.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. I think I have a kind of a lot of what has already been covered, the L cap meeting, the May revised budget workshop. Dennis, we had a Measure T oversight committee meeting. Dr. Baker and I were at the Chamber Education Committee meeting last week. Dr. Baker was on a panel to talk about reopening and what next year's going to look like. We also, Dr. Baker and I attended Senator Hill's Education Roundtable for superintendents and school board presidents. I think the highlights from that were covered in Priscilla's update tonight as far as the numbers that he wanted to talk about. And then he spent a long time just listening to us and what our concerns are and what we're, what we need the legislature to hear from, from school boards. Let's see, I went to, you know, with the Ed Services Committee on Tuesday on the Special Ed Subcommittee. And it was fantastic. And I will say Liz Wolf did a fantastic job facilitating that whole thing. It was so well done. I was really impressed with the, like, start to finish. And that's it. Dr. Baker?
A lot of the same, but I just wanted to let you know that the, as of, oh, it's this morning, yeah, this morning. There is a new executive director for Redwood City twenty twenty. Hopefully, that will be announced within the next few days. You know, so we made a decision. So that person hopefully can start soon, real soon, July one.
Fantastic. Thanks. Okay. There's no information items, correspondence. We've gotten a lot of emails about reopening schools and about Adelante Selby and about boundaries. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. Other business suggested items for the future agenda?
So we have our agendas ready for next week on the seventeenth, and then we have the twenty-fourth coming up. And then, don't forget, we're going to, on the twenty-fourth, we can talk about the July.
Okay.
So I had a question. Usually when we have a special session, we start at six. And I notice we're starting at seven, so is that correct? We're starting at seven?
No, we're starting at six.
Okay, this says seven. Hard copy agenda for future meetings says seven.
I had double talked with Superintendent Baker, so by the time when I posted the agenda, we had not confirmed a time yet, but I will make that correction for next week.
No, it's fine, I just want to make sure people show up on time, the community as well as board members.
Special meetings are normally on six. And it's my fault, I didn't get back to LA in time. I was just doing it. LA in time. I was just doing it.
Yeah, John, you don't have anything going on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that the agenda that gets posted on Friday says the correct time. Changes to the board agenda, maybe July?
Yeah, July. We have to talk about July.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda, ten fifty PM. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Dennis and Maria, can we just say all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll see you back at June seventh. Hi, everyone.
Aye.